With that, if everyone wants to turn to page two dash seventeen.
One additional comment. One of the reasons we're starting earlier, but not really so much earlier now is that if we can get through the entire budget tonight, that would allow us at the next council meeting to have, take action on it. If we can't, we can't. But that's, we fell a little behind last time, so we'll try to work through diligently and we'll go, if we're close, we'll go a little later because it'll be worth it. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So page two dash seventeen is the administration and elected, and then two dash nineteen is elected officials budget. We have those together on one line item. What I would highlight in the administration budget, it's primarily the same, but for some either market condition increases or changing of accounts, but in, let's see, that is five three zero one one zero, professional services. We've increased that and added fifty thousand dollars to look at the option of a lobbyist. This is a conversation that Mayor Levin and I have had. A number of DMMC communities have used lobbyists for grant funds and other legislation, and so we've been talking about that as an option to look at that would go through a committee process before any lobbyist would be hired by the city. And then on page two dash nineteen, elected officials, there is really no change to that budget. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions on those two.
So a selective officials have really held the line the last twenty-one years, so he's going to question that. I will open it up for discussion on either administrative or elected officials. Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, I talked to you a little bit about this earlier today, but in terms of the consultancy fee line, five three zero one zero zero on two seventeen, I know we have a circle back out there that asks for consultant fee details, and I know currently it only lists the two individuals that we contract with right now. So I don't know if this is a circle circle back, but if we could, I'd love to come back and see a more comprehensive part of it. You can tell me, of course, if you may, what these fees are for, but I want to get like sort of a holistic picture of it with.
Which line are you on, Alderman Hill?
I'm sorry, five three zero one zero zero on two seventeen.
All right. I would hope that we can do that in the circle back because we're talking about three thousand five hundred to five thousand dollars here, if I correct.
Just, just to, oh, you know what? I think I misread that, so my apologies. I was seeing it as I was looking at twenty twenty-three. I'm sorry.
That's right. I mean, we will cover the circle back issue on the consulting fees that you had requested, I believe.
Right. And I think another question we had talked about, Mayor, was if, if the circle back would be more comprehensive to include all the other consultancy fees that we have elsewhere, but we've talked about that a little bit.
Alderman Hill emailed me earlier today, wondering if we could list all of the consultant that we have throughout our budget in a circle back. And I said we could, but we'd have to get back to him on that. We couldn't get it done for tonight.
Okay. We'll see where we go on that one. Alderman Bastido.
So for the lobbyist, proposed lobbyist, is that for part of the year, monthly amount? How did you come to that dollar amount? And then my other question is, who would pick the lobbyist, or how would the lobbyist be chosen?
So that fifty thousand was anticipated for an annual amount for a lobbyist?
Okay.
And we would go through an RFP RFQ process to bring in a lobbyist, as I see it.
Okay, so that would be the amount for a twelve-month contract?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, we have not made a decision to hire a lobbyist. It's a placeholder. All right. Other questions on these items? If not, city manager.
Thank you. Next budget is two dash twenty, the border fire and police commissioners. This is the budget that supplies funding for testing for the border fire and police commissioners to conduct public safety recruiting and training and, excuse me, not training, but testing for various positions as mandated through state statute or our collective bargaining agreements.
And you'll see a explanation of the large increase there on one item. Questions? Alderman Bram.
Yeah, I'm page two twenty.
I'm page two twenty. Just wages full-time. It looks like we're estimating an increase of ten thousand dollars from twenty-seven thousand roughly to thirty-seven thousand dollars roughly. Is that hiring a new position, wage increase, a combination of all the above?
Yeah, so that's a portion of the HR salaries, and so we just apportioned that. So our border fire and police commissioners are not paid. That is just the appropriation of various staff who work on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Great. Communications and marketing, I believe, two twenty.
Great. I will ask assistant manager cop to come up to run through the communications and marketing and a few others that follow that.
Communications, page two dash twenty-two. And as we, as we talked about a couple weeks ago, when we went to the Tyler ERP, we did a new chart of accounts, and this is one of the areas that it's totally new, this communications and marketing budget. What it was before, there was portions in the admin budget, there was cable TV, there was visitor and tourism. So those are all combined into this one line item, in this one budget area now, to better account for the funds and how they're spent and where they're spent. So the communications outlets managed by communications include the city's social media channels, the quarterly front porch newsletter, the weekly newsletter, the city's websites, which includes five websites recording ongoing updates and maintenance, news alerts and tools used for incident communication. Team also manages several marketing campaigns, including visitor and tourism initiatives using Explore Elmhurst brand and the Elmhurst Trolley Program. The communications team is responsible for all the department creative services and marketing requests, along with managing public media and relations. So if we go through the budget itself, we look at the line item five three zero one one zero, professional services, and there's J forms for all of these on there also, but that is what used to be the cable TV budget. The cable TV budget in the past was a hundred thousand dollars. It was reduced to eighty thousand dollars, and we're trying to get it back at a hundred thousand dollars to do more like PSAs and some more video work to allow us to better equip our websites and our Elmhurst TV page. And five three zero one one five, memberships and subscriptions. Again, this is sort of this new chart of accounts, trying to better monitor what our subscription services are. The largest portion of that is our due page convention visitors bureau fee, and that's estimated about twenty-seven thousand dollars. It's also, we had, we had a service in the past, a script service for capture, media capture. So anytime Elmhurst was, was mentioned in any type of media, we would gather that. But that was quite a few years ago. The technology is way better now. We were getting a lot of like wrong Elmhurst information, and so we think that this will be helpful for us in the future to understand where Elmhurst stands and what's being sent out in the media outlets. It also takes a look at a new system. We do the citizen survey every other year right now to look at this thing called flash vote, which should give us more real-time information, maybe do smaller surveys rather than one larger every two years to keep updated and information on that. The other services, five three zero nine nine zero, that is the trolley's service and the subsidy for city center. So seventy thousand dollars of that's a subsidy for city center. Hundred twenty thousand is the trolley and the marketing for the trolley. The public information programming, that's the line item that's been really a conglomeration of some of the other line items that were out there. That's our visitors guide. That's the front porch, used to be in the admin budget, has its own line item. That's all part of this line item right now. It's also a large number that has our social media campaigns and updating our social media. It also looks at refreshing our city of Elmhurst brand, not changing our elm leaf insignia, but to just up, to freshen it, be able to use it more effectively in different types of media. And it also has to take a look at updating that close to everything, unlike anything.
I'm sorry, the what?
Close to everything, unlike anything, that video that we have on it, every time you go on Elmhurst TV, it pops up. Just to refresh that, that's information, it's starting to get somewhat stale, so to look at doing that. The other one thing in this line item is the, the five one zero one hundred, wages full-time. So going back to April of 2013, interim mayor Levin and mayor-elect Morley were both in the emergency operating center during a big storm event. It was that time, I think, we thought that the importance of having communications, a communications person, that's what they focus on, that's where it sort of was born. And in 2014, we hired our first communications manager. I mean, everybody can say that communications has greatly changed in the last nine years. Since that time, vision has grown from communications to marketing, media relations, special events, and community engagement. The current structure of our full-time communication manager, part-time communication specialist, and part-time intern has talked about the missile landscape of communications has evolved, demand for timely information has increased, expectations have grown, and community demands access to more information as soon as it available. The 2022 strategic plan update identified one of the following goals as enhanced communication and engage, engagement to all residents through the development of a communications matrix. This long-term return goal will require the intention of expertise from an ambient communications department to successfully meet this goal. Staff is proposing an enhanced staffing model. The current, the current city, the current communications management position is a twenty-four seven three sixty-five for providing emergency communication support to the city manager and elected officials. A recent example was the 2023 boil order alert. This type of incident, while hopefully infrequent to man attention from a team of communication professionals, the expectation of the one full-time person being available twenty-four seven three sixty-five has become challenging. The goals and responsibilities of the commission department have grown exponentially over the last nine years and appears not to be slowing down anytime soon. Communications will continue to be an integral and ongoing component of the city. It has become a challenge to manage the current communication and community engagement programs currently in existence with the current staffing model. The current programs have been well-received and expected by the community. The ability to continue to enhance or satisfactorily maintain communication at this level, expected by the community, can be difficult at the current staffing levels. So as I, it was in this budget, we're recommending the addition of a full-time communication specialist in addition to the current staffing. And I'd be glad to answer any questions on communications and marketing budget.
The, under the salaries and wages line, five one zero one hundred and five one zero one ten, are they, they're popping up like they're new. Are these moved from another budget, or are these both brand-new from another area of the budget?
Right. So Christine could probably answer it better than I because it's split over.
So the existing staff is, was in the administration budget before, so those are getting moved out of administration and into communications, and there is one additional full-time staff member that's budgeted in 2024.
So what's the amount of the new position so that we can see what we're adding?
Sixty thousand two hundred.
All right. You brought back the memory of the Morley flood of 2013. Okay, let's open it up for discussion. Alderman Bastido.
Under other services, line five three zero nine nine nine, you said that part of it's a subsidy to city center from the trolley. Can you let me know what the increase is? And I don't know what the subsidy is that we give city center?
So when SSA seven was removed, which is the SSA that was paid for by the residential buildings in the downtown. So SSA six is the, more of the commercial area, and SSA seven had a sunset in, SSA seven sunset, but the physical demands, as far as like tree lighting, snow removal, garbage removal, cleanup, those were still there. And rather than skip all these residential portions of the downtown, the city council chose to help subsidize the loss that they, they were losing from SSA seven, to continue to serve the whole downtown the same as far as the snow removal, the plantings, the lightings, and whatnot.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I thought that was related to the trolley, but the increase was related to the trolley?
The trolley was the hundreds, a hundred and twenty of that. And it, the trolley increased slightly from what it was last year, but.
Okay.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. Same line item. There's a referral in front of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee regarding the trolley. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So what, is there flexibility in defining routes, et cetera, within that hundred and twenty, or is the contract already negotiated and that's the, the price based on certain criteria?
The price is really, right now, it's based on the hours of operation.
Based on the hours?
Correct.
Okay. So there, in theory, there could be some flexibility as it relates. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Yeah, same page. Back to the wages for full-time. What is the current, I guess, personnel or staffing for the full-time and how many in part-time? Don't need necessarily the titles, but how many for full-time, how many for part-time under these budget items?
There's one full-time, on the one that's inter-chronic, there's two full-time for the one forty-one, and there's one part-time and one intern in the part-time wages.
Are you asking currently, Alderman Bram?
Well, for this budget item, so proposed for 2024. So two, so the communications manager and then the specialist, and then a part-time and an intern.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Alderman Tolu.
On the, can we just get a breakout as a circle back on the public information line item? Because at two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars now, there's a lot in there. I feel like it's kind of a catch-all for a whole bunch of stuff, and I would like a little bit more transparency on what, what that is, all the different components of that.
Which line are you asking about?
Public information, it's on two dash two, twenty-two, five three zero two nine five.
I can, I can give that to you.
You, you have a breakdown of?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So the visitors, the visitors' guide is fifteen thousand dollars. That's a printing of the visitor guide. General marketing and promotional items is thirty thousand dollars. The due page convention visitor bureau, there's a grant in it for five thousand dollars, which is the, the due page convention visitor bureau has asked us to put in every, every year. We have not used it in the, ever, but it's, it's an ask of them to do it. It's a matching grant for, I think it's for like transportation, there's a big event or something like that. They could ask us to do that. Professional photography is twenty thousand dollars. Web updates, that's the auto IMAP, thirty thousand dollars. The refresh of close to unlike everything. There's public arts through Explore Elmhurst, which is twenty thousand dollars. The French market, which we've talked about, starting in 2024, that's ten thousand.
You have to, a little slower, a little more clear, because it's hard to make out what you're saying on those exactly, at least for me.
Professional photography, twenty thousand dollars. Refresh of close to everything, unlike anything, which we talked about earlier, that's ten thousand dollars. Public art through Explore Elmhurst, which is probably something slimmer to what you say is the Umbrella Sky project we used this year to be able to do that. More of the temporary public art exhibits through the Explore Elmhurst, rather than just through, straight through the Public Arts Commission. French market, twenty thousand, twenty thousand for that. The French market, ten thousand. Event marketing, which covers many different events, there's five thousand dollars in that. The front, front porch newsletter, forty thousand dollars. And then the city of Elmhurst brand refresh, fifteen thousand dollars. And then social media, communications, campaigns, fifty-five thousand dollars.
What was the last one?
Social media slash communications slash communicate, and campaigns, like the shop local campaigns, campaigns and things of that nature. Fifty-five thousand.
Okay, so all of that budgeted amount, everything except the things that are, everything except for the social media falls below the city manager's authority. So if we approve all of that, does any of that come through committee next year before it gets spent?
Well, the French market is not something that's yet been approved, so that's one.
Well, it's ten thousand dollars, so like, does that go through? There are several, I, I don't want to belabor it and take up everyone's time, but there are several items on that list that I don't necessarily agree with. And so I don't want to like, again, take up everyone's time, but I want, I will be satisfied if there's a council or committee process for these items. But if there's not, then we're going to have to talk about it now, or before the budget's approved.
Well, there are items that we do on a normal course of business that are included in that list now. If there's things that you want to discuss, I leave it to the mayor as to whether you want to discuss them now or.
Well, even the fifty-five thousand social media, that could be doled out at five thousand, seven thousand, twelve thousand, so that would still fall.
Right.
Well, for the, for example, you know, I think the last time that we approved like a public art project, like that came through the process, you know, and now there's just twenty thousand just thrown out there for public art. Like, is that going to, would that go through the process? Or, and do they also have other funding for that, or?
Well, let's, let's differ between, I think where the confusion is, this isn't for the Public Art Commission commissioned piece of art. This is art exhibits like the Umbrella Sky project that we partnered with on city center, things to attract people to the downtown. It's not for a fixed piece of art. That would be a different Public Art Commission budget.
Right, which has a process. So this is just twenty thousand dollars that have a process, I guess. And I also thought city center paid for all of that. I didn't know we paid for any of that.
Now, this year, we did not.
Okay. So now, all of a sudden, we're going to pony up twenty thousand dollars.
We did in-kind things for the, like the paving at one-ten Cottage Hill, election one-ten Cottage Hill, that stuff like that. We did some in-kind stuff. But I would think like the French market, for instance, that's using a city parking lot. I don't think we would just decide on our own, we're going to have a French market. I think it would go to city council. Same thing, if we were going to do a big public art campaign at certain locations in city of Elmhurst, I think that would also go through a committee process. But the day-to-day communications campaign stuff that we do, we normally don't, like the Love Local campaign, we've never, we just come up with that campaign. I don't think we ever ran through committee or council.
If I may, on the web design and city of Elmhurst branding, I just, I remember, can you please explain, I thought we just redid the website, and I thought we just published a new logo. So what?
That was the Explore Elmhurst logo. So this is the, this is the actual elm tree logo.
Uh-huh. And so this is specific to, so now we're doing all of that specific to Explore Elmhurst, not the city of Elmhurst?
This is more than just for Explore Elmhurst. This is to be able to use this elm tree
City logo.
To modernize it, to be able to use it more than just how we use it right now, like on the letterhead and whatnot. So I think.
So the fifteen thousand and the thirty, the fifteen thousand, you said for city of Elmhurst branding?
Yes.
And then web design was thirty thousand?
Right. That was, this was like, it's called audio IMAP. It's an updated map that would attach to our website that for identifying locations, events, historical markers, that kind of stuff like that. It's a, it's an attachment, I believe, to like our website that would be an enhanced mapping tool to highlight things in Elmhurst.
And?
Or even businesses in Elmhurst.
The main city website, or is that for the Explore Elmhurst?
That'd be like an addition to it.
So, so, but, correct me if I'm wrong, we did redo?
Explore Elmhurst. Yes, we did.
No, the city of Elmhurst this year. So we just forgot about that, or?
Oh, it's an enhancement to it, I guess. I mean, we would, we don't have to do that. I mean, it was, it'd be an enhancement to the, to the website. I mean, there's also a thing in here for a city bot, which is to help you manage yourself through the website easier. I mean, it's the same thing. It's, it's nice to have if we didn't, if we didn't do it. I'm sure our website would be fine the way it is. It's just an enhancement to allow you to maneuver yourself through the website easier. So.
I mean, I don't know if I'm out on a limb here, but I, I feel that this is a whole bunch of small things that have minimal council oversight, that is taking a line item, increasing it substantially, especially from where it used to be in 2022, without a lot of, without a lot of oversight. And that, that's, I guess, what concerns me. Each one of these things, we could have substantive city council and committee input on, and I just don't know if we're, we're going to have the opportunity to do that because of this, the relative small amount for each individual item. But you could group these into kind of some different items. So I don't know how to proceed, really.
Well, let me go to Alderman Deuter, Alderman Veramus, and I'll respond to it. I just want to, I got the feeling they wanted to contribute something here, and we'll continue there. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you. On, I want to hear a little bit more about the public art and how you intend to have this funding work with the commission or not work with the commission. And I also wanted to clarify, as I understand, I think the Public Arts Commission did use some of its funds that had been donated to help support the umbrella exhibit. So I think they were directly involved in that and contributed some of the commission's funds that they have the ability to control to that exhibit. So the city was directly involved.
That's true.
So for.
Alderman Deuter, if you pull the microphone.
Sorry. So for this, I think you said the amount was twenty?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand? And is that something that would be done outside the commission or in partnership with the commission?
Partnership with, in partnership with the commission. On more temporary-type art installations, like I said, similar to the Umbrella Sky, something that would attract people to come to Elmhurst, not a fixed, not a fixed sculpture or something of that nature.
So we don't necessarily have anything in mind?
No.
It's a placeholder if there were that type of opportunity. Thanks for explaining how it works together. I think the umbrella was a great exhibit. It was great for Elmhurst and our downtown area. It was a big partnership, and I, I like the idea of doing more of that. And I like the idea of being a partnership.
Alderman Veramus.
Thank you. I just had some of the same concerns Alderman and Tolu touched on them. Same thing in regards to the public art. I know that city center, when we did the Umbrella and the Sky, they partnered with the Public Art Commission and also did some fundraising for some of those projects. So not sure now how that is going to tie into this. And another question I have is the fifty-five thousand for social media. Can you explain a little bit more about?
That's, I mean, that's more than just social media. It is part of social media. It's the different campaigns we do, like the shop local campaigns we do during the year, and just general communications, things that we, that we would, that we would do as long, throughout the year's time.
Does that include, I remember, is it called CrowdRIP? Is that a, where we have the social media that's on the website, part of Explore Elmhurst website? Is that a annual?
That's all part of the annual fee for the website.
That doesn't fall under that?
I don't think it does. I think that's on our website, which I think all our annual fees on our website are paid through the IT budget. Is that right?
So, social media campaigns, that is, for example, a while back, we had a whole, many Aldermen talking about airplane noise and ONCC and, you know, getting the message Aldermen talking about airplane noise and ONCC and, you know, getting the message out there to the community on, on that and how to take the survey. So these could be things that come up throughout the year that we do need to put funds towards so we can market the message to the community. So some of it's placeholder, some of it, we, like, uh, traffic safety, those are different types of campaigns, so we partner with the different divisions to see what the marketing needs are, and then we'll come up with campaigns accordingly. So it's not just social media.
Alderman.
That can include advertisements and things like that, okay.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the 55,000, is that an increase? What's the current, what's the 2023, what do we typically spend on that social media?
It is a bit of an increase. I think we're about around 30,000. But what we're finding is some of the departments, there is, there's a demand for getting a message out or employee engagement, and there aren't enough funds in the department budget for that, so we would like to take, the marketing communications team would like to take that on.
All right, so back to Alderman Tludel's question. City manager, what, what level of, or what parts of this do you foresee coming to some committee of the council, whether it's PAS, most likely, where there'd be some review over this?
Yes, typically, the Public Affairs and Safety Committee has had oversight over communications. Whenever Cassandra has given updates on, say, the trolley program, something like that, it's gone to Public Affairs and Safety. As Mike said, with the French market, that's an example of where we, if it goes forward, we would most likely be using, would be using either a public street or a public parking lot, and so we would want to come to the committee for something like that. The, the public art campaign, I think, is something that would come to the committee. But typical things like the front porch newsletter, the photography, um, the grant might come to the committee. If DCVB were to come to us to say, we have a group who is looking to have a, a meeting in Elmhurst and they need, as Mike said, maybe transportation or something like that, we could come to the committee with that. I guess I would say anything that's out of the ordinary from typical everyday business, we could bring to the committee if that's what the council would like to see.
Alderman Tludel.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I would appreciate that and it would, and we might all appreciate that for things, you know, front porch, no, you know, routine business, but I think some of these things are, I guess they're new enough. For example, a policy decision, like, does the city council want to, to spend $20,000 of taxpayer money additional to what we're already funding to the Public Arts Commission? I don't know if, if that's the case. And right now, it was just kind of grouped in a big pocket. So I think, I think some of these things that are kind of changes and what we've done in the past should go through a committee process because they're also not likely to be one-year things. They're likely to, to stay in the budget, you know, into the future. So I think, I think things like that should, should come through the committee process, even if they're underneath the city manager's limit. And I also think there's a bigger question, and maybe I'll broach this with a referral in the future, but I think there's a bigger conversation about where the city's job of marketing and bringing people into town ends? And where do the businesses who benefit from that, i.e. City Center, who takes taxpayer, takes their own tax dollars to promote themselves through the SSA, where that, you know, it's a bigger question of like, where, where is our, what is our role in, in driving business and promoting the City of Elmhurst begin and end versus our responsibility to, to our citizens in terms of safety and fire and water and things like that? So any of those topics that, that kind of touch on that as well would be appreciated. If not, maybe I'll submit a referral if I can conceptualize it appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tludel. Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I think in a vein similar to Alderman Tludel's, I'm interested in hearing if the items in membership and subscriptions, 530115, you know, I read the explanation of those communication tools and they sound like great features and good knives to have, but I just wonder if some of these, you know, it's, it's not, I don't often second-guess expertise in this area, but then again, these sound like features that are add-ons and benefits, but I just wondered, do we know if any of these would come to committee for an explanation of the benefits of that service? If nothing else, would those typically go before committee?
Certainly, we can bring those to the committee as we move forward with them, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Yeah, to jump on the bandwagon, um, or some may say trolley. That, I do concur with Alderman Tludel's concerns. It's a big dollar, relatively big dollar amount to then hear the breakout. It's, it's great to understand the breakout and then to be able to understand which, and I understand the accounting nightmare and the reason why it is under just other services, but to then understand on, well, what did we spend last year? You really can't do that comparison when it is bundled. I don't know of any accounting way that you could clarify that, so therefore, I'm not even challenging that, but I, I do understand and concur with the concerns. One thing I do want to touch on and make it a circle back if we need to, is that piece of other services regarding the trolley services. I know Alderman Brennan asked a very pointed question and I, I agree with that question. I just want to dig a little bit deeper on where we're at with the budget amount for that and what that means for the future upcoming years of how we can utilize those dollars.
So are you talking about the $17,000 increase specifically?
The whole budget line item for it out of other services, whatever that total is.
So I just, you're talking about 110101353999, letter E on the J?
Correct. Correct.
All right.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
The current, the current trolley itself, the trolley contract itself is about $85,000. And then a lot of the rest of it's marketing and campaigns that.
You have to be a little louder, I think.
So it's like $85,000 for the trolley itself. So if we were going to add another trolley, it'd be $85,000 to add another trolley, most likely, if you're going to keep it consistent with that. The rest of it is like marketing and campaigns that go along with the trolley program.
But may I follow up on that?
Alderman Bram.
I mean, under the J form on the next page, it says increases due to projected increase in trolley services fees. So is that the dollar amount that the mayor spoke about? 17,000 in increase in the trolley-specific fees or campaign or both? Because the J form says 17 for fees.
Yeah, the majority of it is the trolley itself, the fees for the trolley itself.
Okay.
Alderman Bram, are you on deck still there?
Well, since I already requested for it to be a circle back, I won't belabor the point. It just isn't jiving with what is said and what I'm reading in the budget book, because it states in the budget book that there's an increase of 17,000. And the proposed is 190,000 for 2024 budget, right? And I just heard that the trolley piece is 85,000. So I'm confused between 190, 190,000 and 85,000.
The 190 also includes a City Center subsidy.
City Center subsidy, which means we give.
Just 75,000.
Which is the 75,000 we give to City Center.
It depends, it's all based on a formula. It could be less, it could be a little more. I think this year actually was a little bit less. It's hard to say because of the calendar year compared to 64,000 was the last one. We budgeted 75,000 based on past costs. And the biggest, the biggest one in that is snow. That's the one that can cause it to go to the highest, the highest. I mean, if we don't get a lot of snow, it's not going to be 75,000. If we do, it will be 75,000.
But just, just so everyone's clear, are you saying that the, so this line item, you're saying 85 or so is trolley?
Physical trolley.
64 to 75 is made up of other services such as snow removal that we would subsidize?
So the total trolley is 115,000.
Is how much?
Hundred, about 115,000.
All right.
The trolley itself is about $85,000. The rest of it, it's the marketing and, and campaigns that go along with the trolley program. 75,000 is a subsidy to City Center. I think it's a maximum of 75,000 on that subsidy too. It's a cost share, it depends on their, their costs for planting, snow removal, tree lighting, I think, and maintenance, grounds maintenance.
And maintenance. All right, does that answer your question, Alderman Bram? You still want to circle back on that?
Can we leave it as a circle back, please?
We'll see where we go, all right.
Is there additional information that you're looking for?
If we could just write that out and add it to the circle back list so I can review it, that would be great.
All right, anyone else? On we go.
Uh, Human Resources, page 224. City of Human Resources Department supports the city by developing and managing employee resources, including staffing and recruitment, managing employee and labor relations, performance management, training and development, and compensation and benefits. The HR department is also the staff liaison to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, which facilitates the hiring of police and officers, police officers and firefighters. Let's see if we just, we got this thing. Some of the upcoming events are the Initiate Successor Agreement for the, the Police Bargaining Unit. And continue to help collaborate with the Finance and IT Departments, implement ERP and the Human Capital Management Module. Facilitate and complete the Fire and Police promotional processes, facilitate the Department Director Safety Committee. And looking at some of the different accounts, Accounts 520350, that's the same thing with the new chart of accounts. Retiree insurance used to get charged at each different department, depending where the retiree was from. And again, as we spoke about at the first night, we did with the Tyler Muniz, we did the chart of accounts and realigning some areas to better fit how the funds are dispersed and to be easier tracked. That's at 638,400. Uh, account 530130, HR Employee Relations. This count of previously was budgeted at $25,000 annually. In 2023, we reduced this budget to $15,000. This count is proposed return to $25,000 as is expected to exceed the budget in 2023. New programming was not added to this budget, rather, the 2024 proposed budget will be appropriate for those annual anticipated expenses. This is for like the citywide employee events, recognitions, anniversary service awards, memorials, and other similar expenses. This budget funds three main citywide employee recognition events, spring, fall, and holiday, as well as recognition in specific departments such as retirements. And then 530135, fiscal examinations. This account funds non-sore pre-employment occupational health testing. And the budget has increased to the cost of pre-employment testing has increased. It's also the physical, Fire Department annual physicals come out of this line item also.
All right. Alderman Brennan.
So I'm on line item 520350. I understand it's a result of our new ERP system and chart of accounts, but I don't know if I understand the line item itself.
I can speak to that. So a requirement that the city has, a statutory requirement, is to allow employees to remain on our health insurance plan. And so the city does allow that, however, the retirees do pay 100% of the premium, so the city does not subsidize that. Previously, we kept all of the retirees in the different departments, so it really inflated the cost, I'll just use the Police Department as an example, right? It inflated the cost of insurance for the Police Department and their department budget because there were retirees reflected in that. We do receive revenue to cover the cost of those insurance from the retirees. So just really to provide simplicity, one, in tracking, as well as kind of to have the department budget show the true, true cost of providing insurance to the employees. We just centralized that retiree insurance expense in the Human Resources budget. You will see in the revenue section for the general fund, the revenues of those payments coming in from the retirees to pay for that retiree insurance.
Excellent response.
I thought it was pretty good. I will say this, you know, I feel like we, we've had about six or seven of these where we're changing things in the budget, and for those of us that have been around, it's kind of hard to see, you know, it feels unfamiliar. I assume, or should, will we be having these changes every year? Do you feel like the majority of the changes that you as Finance Director want to do have been done, so we'll now see the new?
I feel like the majority of the changes that were, you know, were made kind of with this, you know, chart of accounts change, so that kind of, it was a time to kind of really holistically look at it. Certainly, I can't say as operations change, you know, one of the things that we added in the IT budget, which Mike will talk about, is there is something now called subscription-based information technology agreements. And that's both a Government Accounting Standards Board term, as well as kind of a shift in how IT services are delivered from a software to a service model. So certainly to the extent that our operations say, hey, maybe it's better to have a new account because our operations are different, then we'll look at that. And then we've tried to, where possible, always give J forms to explain what was shifting and why the changes were made. So we'll continue to do that.
I mean, there wasn't necessarily a J form on this one, I don't think, but it's a good question. City Treasurer's nodding his head, so it must be okay. All right. Any other questions on this one? City Manager.
Yeah, the IT budget, page 2-26. Uh, this year, this IT provided support services for over 4,200 support service work orders, executed a migration of the city's email platform from On-prem Exchange to Microsoft 365. Transitioned the city to a new online water billing payment portal. Cybersecurity enhancements, which included continued cybersecurity training, firewall replacements, and enhanced monitoring. Migrated the city's utility bill printing from an in-house legacy hardware to an outsourced print service provider. The focus for the remainder of '23-'24 will be the continued support of the city's transition to Tyler Technologies Enterprise Platform, continued cybersecurity enhancements, Police Department body cameras, and PC replacements. Cybersecurity will continue to be a focus as we look at ways to improve our security posture, which in turn will help control the ever-growing cost of cyber insurance, cybersecurity insurance. In 2024, we'll be incorporating segments of the utility fiber network to interconnect our buildings, thus reducing expenses that relates to the fee-based telecommunications infrastructure providers such as AT&amp;T and Comcast. Look at line item 530600, is the equipment maintenance, and that's a combination of other, a miscellaneous line items from last year that we combined to one line item now. The increase over the last year is due to the replacement of legacy hardware, and now we are moving into the warranty phase of the various IT hardware platforms for such things as our city firewalls and server, and server infrastructure. Line item 530611, which is the, the line item, which Director Qual just talked about, subscription-based IT agreements. We have separated out the city's software licensing, which is subscription-based. Doing this is in line with the guidance provided by the GOFA, G, no, Gatsby standards, sorry, Gatsby standards. The city leverages many cloud-based service contracts, which includes Microsoft Office 365 platform, Microsoft Azure cloud-based infrastructure for the ERP platform, and Amazon Web Services for the utilities, enterprise asset management. It's important to track these, right to use the subscription-based assets, and we anticipate the overtime, that overtime, the city will continue to leverage more and more of these types of agreements. Last, I would mention, the entire IT budget gets allocated to each department based on the number of laptops and desktops in that department. You'll notice in the budgets of the other departments in line, item 590920, IT services, the breakdown of these allocations can be found on page 929 in a supplemental information section of the budget. I'd be glad to answer any questions on the IT budget.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. I'm on line 540800, other equipment. So I see the breakout. I'm just curious, you know, the 200,000 for the AV equipment, what is that specifically for?
Security cameras, basically, for buildings in Elmhurst, our facilities that don't have them, and to upgrade some of them that have still the analog technology. So in line is Fire Station 1, which has no cameras right now. Fire Stations 2 has the analog cameras. Our public, our parking decks need some upgrades and additional cameras put on them. $200,000 is not going to do everything we need to do, but we're totally working it piece by piece to get it done. City Hall. totally working it piece by piece to get it done. Uh, City Hall will be done starting, hopefully Monday, next Monday, or, uh, to have it done by the end of the year for security cameras on this building. But that's the majority of that funding.
Excellent. Okay, what?
Go ahead.
So, so same line item. Uh, I see a hundred thousand dollars for Public Works radio system. How is that used?
Uh, a good example is if, uh, they're on snow, there's snow commands out there, and snow command is to get to all of their, the weather's changing, they get to all their drivers, and say, the spread of salt's going from two pounds per whatever to six pounds or whatever, the, it's, it's the way to communicate to all of them. Uh, I know there was talk at one point to use like cell phones, but while they're driving the plow trucks, we don't want them using their cell phones to do it. The system that we're looking at doing, actually, the system that's in place right now is a very antiquated system. Uh, the new system is going to be a cellular-based system, but it's going to be a radio, it's still going to be a radio system.
Okay. Thank you.
Others? Alderman Bram, then City Treasurer.
Yeah, just one question here. Um, as technology changes, right? Um, it's tough to keep up with everything that's going on. We have a great asset right in our backyard, Elmhurst University. I do see that we have a part-time line item here for about twenty grand, which looks like it actually is lower than previous years. Um, are we, is the city looking at or continuing to look at trying to utilize students as interns, you know, you have master's degree programs and everything else, or co-ops, or, or, uh, part-time staff to try to supplement on what is really needed with everything in the municipal, uh, infrastructure?
Yes. And we have, uh, interns all the time. Actually, right now, we do not. The two that we had just went back to school, so they, they're not. And now, what we've been trying to do over the last so many years was to have like one full-time intern, not full-time hours, but year-round intern. So it would be like Elmhurst University or some local university. And then over the summer, we supplemented with another intern that's maybe at a school that's out of state that can't be here throughout the year. So right now, it's open, so a musician, but, uh, that's, that's the, what we've been doing by the last ten years, where we try to have one from a local university. Elmhurst University is one that we've used many times, uh, for the, for a year-round intern.
Great. I mean, that's great to hear. I mean, it's, it's a great asset. I just think, and no matter what department, we should try to utilize as much as we can. Glad to hear that we are continuing to consider to do that. I was just shocked to see the number go down versus going up, because I would like to see as many possible interns, um, that we, uh, have business for.
City Treasurer.
With regard to the SPIDA's, approximately how many do we currently have? Are they mainly single-year, multi-year? Any ability to expand on that?
So we're currently looking at the number of SPIDA's. Um, I think some of ours will be carved out as some exceptions to them. So, um, the library is one, is an example where we thought there would be a lot of SPIDA's that would affect the audit with all of the digital content, but a lot of those are scoped out of the, the Gatsby standard.
Excellent.
You guys talking?
SPIDA is a, is a technical term for a subscription-based information technology agreement. So there was a, a recent standard issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board that is effective for our audits ending this year, where we have to account for those and report those in our, our annual audit.
Thank you. All right. Other questions on this? City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we would like to run over the building department. As Mike pointed out to me, that we really didn't get to that the first night. So if you go back up to the top two dash thirty-five, um, full transparency, we didn't, apparently that wasn't covered, um, on that first night. So we'll skip to that.
We were wondering about that. All right.
And I know that we have two interns right now in the communications department, and I know for a fact, one of them is an Elmhurst University student. Are both of them? Okay, one of them is, yes.
Two dash three-five.
Page two dash thirty-five, building department. Uh, through October thirty-first of this year, uh, we've issued forty-one-hundred permits with total construction value of approximately a hundred eighty-seven million dollars. Building inspectors have done almost ten thousand construction-related inspections. Code enforcement has performed twenty-four hundred inspections and managed over fifteen hundred, uh, sixteen hundred code violations. Um, year-to-day, we have issued sixty-two new home permits as compared to seventy-four last year. There are seven waiting in, to be issued, and additional fourteen new home plans currently in the plan review process. Again, uh, the building department manages some of our, our check valve and overhead sewer program. Uh, last year, up to this time of this year, we've had nine check valve people, uh, take advantage of the check valve program, and four for the new overhead sewer program. Uh, the inflow and infiltration abatement program identified over three hundred homes eligible for this program. So between these programs, seven hundred and fifty homes now have protection from flooding or reduced infiltration. Uh, again, as a reminder, we, to receive this reimbursement, you have to remove all clear water, uh, from your sanitary system. Um, and basically, the budget's pretty consistent with what has been the past. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Alderman Bram.
Yeah, and two thirty-five, five-three-zero-one-hundred, the consultant fees, is that part of the two roles that we talked about previously, or what are those?
That's basically if we use, there's a couple professional organizations, like BNF Technical is one of them, for assistance for either a plan review or specific assistance with some complex system. And our elevator consultant, who does all elevator inspections and plan reviews, in that line item.
Thank you.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So I'm on, uh, line item five-seven-zero-six-hundred. Um, everything looks good for 2024 from my perspective. What's the, um, the vehicles out in 2025?
I'm sure it's it. Placement of inspectors vehicles.
Is that replacement of the building department?
E eight and E twenty-one. Inspection vehicles, E eight and E twenty-one for inspector cars.
Twenty, twenty-one?
E eight, E twenty-one. A Ford Fusion and a hybrid. And a Dodge Caravan.
Okay. It's not for this year, but I was curious. So that they are vehicles for this department. Okay, thank you.
Make a note for next year. All right. Other questions? All right. I'll pick up where we left off. Legal?
Thank you. Page two twenty-dash-twenty-nine. Which is the legal department, um, which of course are, um, are all consulting attorneys. Um, so this is, uh, a little bit of a, uh, a guess and, and based on averages of previous years where we might end up with our legal fees, which is our biggest, uh, part of that. Um, as Mike said earlier with the HR budget, Labor Council is up slightly, um, from the estimated, only because we have, we know we have a contract coming up, um, for FOP. And, um, as the council knows, we get into various issues throughout the year, and the sole determinant is how much we use our attorney, of course.
It's not up over budget, just over actual?
Over actual, yes. Um, and then, uh, I, just to explain, the prosecuting attorney and DUI prosecutions are the same attorney group, but not Starino, Romello, and Durkin. We use a separate group for our prosecutions, uh, both for traffic here in City Hall and at court, and then for DUI.
All right. Alderman Bram.
More of on how we do business here, question. Um, I know years, if not decades ago, we talked about retainer, no retainer from an attorney perspective. Has that been revisited lately? And what's the thoughts on, staff's thoughts on, on that?
Yes, we did revisit that over the past year. Uh, so a report came out of, uh, Finance Committee, um, looking at that. And, um, we looked at what we would need if we were to bring it in-house, and the difference between bringing it in-house and using, um, a firm was, um, slightly different. However, because of the, um, the knowledge, um, and the experience of the attorney group that we have, it was decided we would stay with this, uh, process that we have now. And if we ever want to look to make a change in the firm, that would be the opportunity to look at bringing it in-house.
Okay.
I can get you the date of that report?
It was reviewed. I'm, I'm good with that. Yeah, if you could send me the date, that's fine. Thank you.
City Treasurer.
You know, we had those couple of reductions that we thought might reduce the fees. I think it was like writing up ordinances and such. Do you, do you attribute the estimated twenty-three being short of the budget to those types of things? Or was it more due to lack of major need of an attorney event?
I'd, I'd like to say it was the first, but I don't have any evidence of that, Treasurer. I would have to really dig into that one.
This is one item that is largely dependent on what outside forces impose on us, particularly not only on labor negotiations and how far we have to go down the road, but also, as all of us know, a number of litigated matters that have occurred over the last year. So we have to budget for what might be. All right. Anything else on legal? City manager.
I will turn the, uh, next item, which is item two dash, page two dash thirty, over to the Finance Director.
So on page two dash thirty is the cost center claims against the city. This is where any costs related to, um, any claims might arise, whether it be accidents, auto liability, general liability, those claims are paid out of this account. So the budget is just prepared, um, using, you know, a historical average as the budget amount, uh, based on prior experiences. We can never really predict the future as to what that amount will be.
So these are amounts that are not covered by insurance where we're?
Right. So things that either we didn't meet the deductible, so the city had to pay that, or, um, costs that we bore.
Questions? All right. Public Health.
Thank you. That's page two dash sixty-four. And that covers two line items. Uh, one is our contracted ambulance service and the mosquito abatement contract. I would note that the mosquito abatement contract comes up in 2024, so we would look to bid that out.
Any questions? All right, next.
Uh, the next page, two dash sixty-five, human services involves a number of items. And, uh, a couple notes that I'd like to make, that youth commission will be nine thousand dollars, not five thousand dollars. That was a typo. Um, and that's consulting with the youth commission each year on different programs that they, uh, that they bring to the community. And then, um, the senior council grant, uh, that was increased based on the committee discussions. PA and S had a lengthy discussion about that, and what the senior citizens council request is each year versus what we have budgeted. And so we've increased that, uh, so that the committee can, again, discuss that when it comes up, uh, to see. There was certainly interest in, in getting closer to what they're asking for than what we had budgeted in the past. Uh, and one other note is that, um, the senior taxi subsidy is a very, very popular program. Uh, we moved over to a different model a few years ago, uh, with RideShare, and it has proven to be very popular.
Alderman Bram.
So I was going to ask that question. So you stole my thunder, City Manager, about RideShare. I'm glad that it's popular, and I'm, I'm glad that it's, uh, continuing forward. Are we subsidizing the taxi cabs as well still? Because I didn't, wasn't there some type of program there too?
No, that, we actually moved to an Uber system versus, or Rideshare, I should say. I don't want to advertise for any one company. A Rideshare, uh, program where we, uh, help pay for that rather than, uh, the taxi cabs.
Wow, look at that, advancing forward. Good to hear.
That's cool.
Alderman Ardini.
Thank you. Mayor, uh, City Manager, question about, uh, senior citizens council. Uh, that was the, I am pleased to see that that was raised. How does this process work? After committee gave them what we had budgeted last year despite that they were asking for more, staff decided based on the discussion that took place at that committee that it should be raised, um?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, and again, it'll come back before the committee. Just because it's in the budget doesn't mean that is what PAS or the council will decide to give, but it's there in the budget if the committee and council decide to give more than what was given last year.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm, uh, not mistaken, I believe that was included in the report as well, that, uh, the committee would like to revisit that.
I, I sup, if I may, so what staff is, is overseeing that?
Um, so the, the letter comes to me, and then I hand it off to, in this case, Dave Olberg, uh, as the staff liaison to the committee to work through that. And, uh, all other senior, um, citizen programs come through the clerk's office.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, next page two dash thirty-one. I'll turn it back to, um, Christina.
So two dash thirty-one is the Finance Department budget. And before we launch into the details of the numbers, I just wanted to, to spend two minutes, a very brief, uh, on some things that were accomplished in 2023 and some of our highlights for 2024. Um, so some projects that the council is well aware of that the Finance Department helped with this year was the stormwater fee study, um, the home rule sales tax, um, that was, uh, worked in concert with that, the water and sewer rate study that is currently underway, as well as the comprehensive update of the purchasing policy. Um, a couple of projects that are maybe not as readily apparent, um, that we also worked on in 2023. Um, we transitioned the water bill printing to an outsourced print model, so, um, gave that a refreshed look and allowed us to retire some outdated, um, dot matrix printing equipment and that we would no longer need to replace. Um, we also integrated, um, our online payment system with our Water Smart system. Uh, so this, uh, raised, um, our Water Smart registrations from thirty percent to sixty percent, which now puts us in one of the, the lead communities for the percentage, um, registered. Um, this also yielded, um, substantial credit card savings in our credit card fees. So, um, about ninety thousand dollars in credit card savings by transitioning from, um, our previous provider with, um, our, our, uh, old system to this new system. So some, several benefits related to that. Um, we also continue to work on, um, implementation of the human capital management portion of the ERP system, as well as executive time, which is a timekeeping system and rolling that out across all departments. Uh, moving into 2024, we will continue to work on the, um, human capital, which is both the HR and payroll modules of our new ERP system. That is set to go live in April of 2024. Um, and we will, also are going to work on a parking fund analysis. And the one thing that I should back up and talk about with the, the ERP system as well is we did go live January first with our purchasing and general ledger module, as well as the budget, which, um, we use to prepare, um, today's budget. So that went live January first. That was on time and actually under budget for that first phase of the ERP system as well. Um, so moving to the Finance Department budget, um, I would say, you know, most things, um, remain, um, very similar from prior years. Um, some accounts to note, um, there, um, was some shift in the budget from contract staffing to, um, full-time staff. That was one change that is, is being proposed. Um, our banking expenses, you all noticed that that substantially decreased from the estimated actual. That was due to that shift with Water Smart. Um, and then the only other, um, minor increase that we have is in minor equipment for any items that we would need. Um, one, to replace some, some aging, um, furniture in our mailroom, as well as anything that we would need as we move into the utility, utility billing portion of the ERP, um, system. And so the ERP, uh, we are hoping will go live, the ERP, the utility billing, we're hoping will go live in, um, late 2024. And that would be, um, the water billing portion.
Well, I think the Finance Committee in particular, but those of us who have been keeping an eye, I don't know how much work it has been to get the ERP in, and it's, uh, congratulations to the Finance Department on that. It's quite an undertaking, and I guess there's still more to go. Um, but a job well done between you and that guy from IT over there. Um, other discussion on this one?
I have a question.
Alderman Brennan.
So, uh, could you just speak to, you know, the conversion of contract staffing at, to, to full-time? Could you just, sort of help bridge that, that gap?
Sure. So, uh, kind of the history of the contract staffing, you know, starting back in, in 2021.
Sure. So kind of the history of the contract staffing, you know, starting back in 2021, that was when we started with the contract model for the Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director. As we have moved through the ERP process, we kept some staff as contract positions, knowing that as we moved through the ERP process, we didn't really know what positions and in what places we needed. So we kept contract staffing in those positions to allow us to kind of identify where in the Finance Department we needed staff. Did we need a payroll person? Did we need an accounts payable person? Where was the need? So we've been using contract staff to kind of allow us the flexibility to make those decisions. We do still have two contract staff that are paid for out of the MUF budget in the Finance Department as well. So this is not removing all of the Finance Department's contract staff. This is just the portion paid for in the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's move on to interfund transfers. Two seventy.
Two dash seventy, I will also ask Director Coyle to touch on that.
So two dash seventy is our other financing uses, which includes our interfund transfers. So what you will notice in 2024 is there are zero interfund transfers. So that is because in 2023, we are no longer, or sorry, moving into 2024, we're no longer transferring funds to the stormwater fund. So with the increase in the home real sales tax to fully fund stormwater, we do not need to transfer general fund dollars to the stormwater fund anymore. There was a transfer to the parking system in 2023. We had budgeted for that to be $447,000. The actual is $212,000, so a little bit better in the parking fund, which we talked about as part of that budget. There is still a deficit in the parking fund for 2024. So whether or not that amount would need to be transferred or not, that's a discussion. I know that the Finance Committee wants to look at as far as the health of the parking fund and what to do there. So I didn't want to presume that we were transferring money from the general fund without having that discussion take place.
Questions on interfund transfers? Very good. Thank you for that. Capital Improvement Fund, two seven one.
Yeah, and really that's two seven four, which is the expenditure side. The other ones have revenues in them, but those are transfers to the other funds from Capital Improvement Fund. That's what this one does.
Any comment on you want to make? No? All right. All right, transfers from the Capital Improvement Fund to the funds indicated. Any questions or discussion? Number one, Tax Increment Fund.
Great. Five dash one, which would start the Tax Increment Finance Funds. So on actual five dash four is where TIF one, which is closed essentially, just trying to spend down the remaining balance in that. So there's not much to talk about in that. And so we would turn to page five dash 10 for the North York or TIF four. Expenditures include the business grant programs, intergovernmental payments, which, correct me if I'm wrong, but the 10% portion to District 205 kicks in next year per the agreement we signed when we negotiated that TIF, along with the statutory payments in the event that we get new students into that. And then the big one at the bottom are the sidewalks. And I believe that Crestview is, that's Crestview, that's correct? Okay. Yeah, so that is the Crestview sidewalk engineering and the North York sidewalk. Happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Do you remember what year, was it 2012 or 2013 when we started this one?
I believe it was 2013.
Right. Any questions? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. On that page, five dash 10, consultant fees. What roles, I guess, are being rolled up? Well, actually, it's being zeroed out going on from 2024 and 2025. What were these fees if we know in the past?
So the consultant, the consultant fees in here just really got regrouped into professional services because they're very similar accounts. So the combined $50,000 does account for a portion of the two consultants, which we have discussed. It also, this is also the line item where if there are any legal fees associated with the TIF, those would get put to professional services. Any studies that we would need to do, redevelopment agreements that would need to be negotiated that we would have consultants review, financial projections, those would all come into that account. And that just fluctuates year to year based off of what activity is in the TIF.
To be charged to the TIF funds.
Correct.
Okay, so essentially those two are combined, consultants and professional services. Next question, my eyes are starting to get tired. Five three zero, two four zero. Most of this TIF, except essentially, I think, the Han Street redevelopment, what is that called, Elmer's 255 going north, is where this TIF starts and heads north. So what is the city, is that for those handful of properties that are in the downtown?
Yes. So any TIF receipts that we get that are attributed to SSA six, those are remitted to City Center. So you'll see this account both in TIF four as well as TIF six. There's just a very small portion of TIF four, which is in SSA six. So those funds get turned over to City Center.
Okay. And then the last question, 120,000 was used by developer incentives? If you happen to know, what were those developer incentives this year? Because I don't know of any major projects in that TIF.
So that is also some of our grant programs as well. So those got combined to the business grant program. So I believe developer incentives was some of the sign grants as well as the retail, 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 because the facade grants used to be down in the capital line item. So that's kind of consult, all of those programs that are kind of our business programs got consolidated into that new business grant program so that all of those programs live together. But that's not like a developer incentive, like a payment to a developer for a development. It's more of the business grant programs.
I get on the combination going forward, but what was it for that line item this year? Was it still a grant or? Because right underneath is business grant programs for 100,000, which was estimated for 2023. And there was 120,000 for developer incentives for 2023. So it was obviously broken out this year. I'm just trying to understand on what those monies were spent on. I get going forward, it's combined. We don't know, we can.
So the, I believe they are the amounts spent for some grants this year, as well as ones that had been approved but haven't been paid out. And we do have a schedule on those that we can certainly provide.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Bond and Interest Funds, six dash one.
We have actually two more TIF districts to.
You want to do them all? All right.
Unless everybody's feeling good about them and.
Yeah, I forgot.
Just kidding. Moving on, TIF five, which is the Church Road Lake Street Redevelopment Fund. And those expenditures are on page five dash 16. Ones to highlight include professional services. We had some contractual services or have for legal services. And then the business grant programs that Christina just mentioned for the facade grants, sign grants, and the retail business grants.
Discussion. Alderman Jensen.
So similar to the discussion on last one, developer incentives and business grant programs, you know, there hasn't been much there. Are we anticipating a lot of activity? Is that why it's budgeted 220, or is that just sort of anticipating or hoping?
That's not based off of like a known, known grants. That's just kind of based off of an annual funding amount that we try to have available in case there are businesses that would need the funds.
The chances are, we'll see here next year, it'll be closer to 10,000 than 220,000.
It's possible.
Alderman Bram.
Yeah, I guess back to the, what used to be called consultant services, now combined in professional services. What is the breakout for the two consultants referenced earlier out of that allocation in this upcoming fiscal year of 2024?
Hold on one second and we will get that.
You're five three oh one one?
Yeah, sorry. Five three oh one one zero.
Yeah, there's a J.
So TIF five was 5,000 to Vance Lake and 4,000 to Bartels is how that was broken out. And then the rest of the professional services, as I said, are legal fees, you know, different analysis reports that we might need consultants to do, just on an as-needed basis.
Got it. Thank you.
That breakdown is also on attachment B of the circle back memo. It's on the website.
Much appreciated.
City Treasurer.
Do we have any plan on when the line of credit is going to get paid off? Line 56, slightly related to 56,000.
So we just renegotiated that line of credit, which went through council at the end of October. So the 2020, I'm sorry, I'm going back to North York. So the good news is for North York, we anticipate being able to repay that portion in 2024 for North York's portion. It really though, right now is getting reabsorbed by TIF six. So at this point, where we're trying to kind of work, we have a forecast schedule on paying it down, but it really does depend on when the increment comes in and when we're able to kind of make those repayments back to the line of credit. We do so as the TIFs grow.
All right, next TIF.
Thank you. That's page five dash 22 are the expenditures on the TIF six or the downtown redevelopment area. Those include line items such as the city center cost sharing, which we talked a little bit about, the business grant programs, which we've mentioned a couple of times, intergovernmental payments to the school district for new students within any new developments, the train station, of course, and then utility relocation, which has been a carryover for a couple of years now. That's to underground utilities in an alley between Second and Third and York and Addison. We've just not had, good luck with working with one of the property owners and also with the utility company. So we continue to work at that. We were obligated in redevelopment agreement to do that, so we continue to work and budget that.
Discussion. All right, City Manager. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Brennan.
So you referenced the train station. What, are there any dependencies that need to clear before we start that?
Yes, there are a number of dependencies on that. In fact, we were just scheduling a meeting with Metra to go through those. We're still working through the property issues with UP and I dot review to get on that bid list.
Thank you.
Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, I see the, in the attachment B that you sent in the circle back memo where you broke out the consultant fees for various TIFs and other things. Can I just get a brief summary of what they do for the TIFs? Like, what do those consultants provide in terms of those TIFs?
Yeah, so it could be real estate advising on if we're purchasing a property, selling a property, valuing a property. It helps when we're looking at forecasting the revenues that would come in as to valuations, when certain buildings might go on the tax rolls as a partial or a full, so that we can forecast, excuse me, our revenues for the next year. And working with different businesses on the different grant programs we have, retention, those type of things.
Do we ever have any plans to bring that sort of expertise in-house? I know we've contracted with them for a number of years and is there just not, because there's a number of amounts spread out around here. Is this something where we're just, it's more affordable for us to reach out and have consultants do this work for us? Why have we not?
Why don't we do that all together?
As part of the circle back?
Yeah, because if we're going to do it for each.
That sounds like good advice. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on this TIF? Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. I'm five dash 22 regarding the metro station, so line item 570, 100. This project started out at like a $20 million project. I thought it went up to 35 maybe, but what's budgeted is 44. So a two-part question. One, can you explain, am I remembering things wrong on just those facts? And then, two, you know, not to, you know, use a poor pun, but like, at what stage in the process can we stop this train? If we wanted to?
It's not exactly a pun, but okay.
Foshee? I don't know. I get them wrong all the time.
So Alderman, you do recollect the cost accurately. That initially we started, it was closer to 20 million and then that was pre-COVID and everything that's happened with that and delays and cost escalations. We estimate now to be closer to 38, 40 to 40 million plus the construction engineering. If I have that correct.
Yes, that's correct.
And there's been an increase in, not totally, but in grant funds that we have acquired since it was 22 and we are continuing to seek additional funds.
That's correct.
Well, yes, what I see reflected in the schedule of revenues is a 17 and a half million dollar, you know, plus the 10 million in assumed bond proceeds. Oh, the 17 is twice, so we're getting 34-ish?
Correct.
So then I guess, could you answer my second part question, which is, you know, is Public Works, you know, gonna, at what point in time do we, does someone look at the total cost and the total grants? And, you know, bidding starts and, you know, we make a decision, because this has been in our budget, right, for years? And we're getting much closer to the reality of, you know, actually spending money and sending this out for bid. And I just think, you know, with all, again, with all of the things that we've got going on, police station, metro station, et cetera, everything that everyone knows about, it would be great to just have a stage where someone is looking at it in totality and recommending an actual moving forward with the project. Because once we start, we can't stop it. We're going to either build it all or we're not going to build it. Thank you. Can you respond, please?
Yes, we would bring that to Public Works for review. The plans, I think, are about 90% done and we'll find out more, what day is today? Monday? Wednesday in our typical weekly meeting where our Assistant Public Works Director, Kavari, meets every Wednesday with the consulting engineers. As I mentioned, we're calling a meeting with Metra to talk about all their funding and the possibilities. And of course, the UP issue with the lease or purchase. So we would bring those plans to Public Works Committee for that, I guess you would call it final approval, to then move forward with the project. It's technically bid through the I dot process.
And when, when, when you go to Public Works, you'll have all the grants that you're expecting to get. You'll have the full financial summary presented. And when, is that in January? Is that, when do you expect that that conversation will be had with?
Yeah, it would have to be right after the first of the year. And as Finance Director just pointed out to me, if we have to issue any bonds for that, that would obviously be council action as well.
Right.
For the difference.
Because it's planned for like 10 million in 2024.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? City Manager.
Thank you. I will turn it back over to the Finance Director for the Bond and Interest Funds, page six dash one.
So that's under the Debt Service tab in your finders. And so six dash one, really six dash three, this fund pays for the debt service associated with governmental bonds. So not MUF and not parking bonds, but basically there are transfers that come into the. are transfers that come into the fund from the capital fund in the stormwater fund to then pay the series of debt service that are related to our governmental activities, which are listed on six dash four.
Questions? All right, next line item, City Manager.
That is seven dash one, which are the trust and agency funds. And those are our police and firefighters pension funds.
So the police and firefighters pension funds, they are included in the city's budget, but the fire and police pension boards do have jurisdiction really over, you know, the funds for those pension funds. And they are the boards that approve expenses associated with the fire and police pensions. And so what's budgeted for is just their general administrative expenses as well as the pensioner payments to the pensioners.
Right, any discussion on that? All right, we're at that portion of our program called the circle backs. I don't know if people want to take a break or jump into it, but we may, if we can cover the circle backs, then we can take action. And then there's nothing outstanding. We can take action on the budget the next council meeting. The way that we do this, for those who have not done this process before, is I will go through each circle back, sort of read what the title is. I'll ask the person who asked the question, does the information provided by staff adequately address your question? And then if so, we'll move on, or unless someone else has a question. So maybe we'll, people want to proceed right on? By the way, we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll circle back. You can get all circled up. Let's reconvene it promptly at eight fifty-five. If I'm reading that correctly. All right. We're in recess. We're at the circle back part of our agenda. City Manager, do you have any opening comments before we get into circle backs?
Thank you, Mayor. You covered it well, that we tried to address everything that Alderman had brought up in the memo. And as you said, we're still here to answer questions if you have any.
All right. So you each should have received your circle back memo. Item one is Alderman Toledo's project on the chart on page one dash thirty-two throughout the five-year KEB term. Alderman Toledo, do you have additional questions or points you would like to raise?
No, I think the information presented was pretty consistent with what I asked. I would make a couple of comments. One thing that I think I asked for, but I understand why you didn't provide it, is like what the tax levy would be if we put the, all of those implied bond issues on the tax levy. I have a relative sense of what that would be, just based on kind of my knowledge. But if you want to say anything about that, you're welcome to. So I appreciate the information. I think, obviously, kind of 2025, you know, we have a little bit of a spike up. We're at a bit of a low point right now. So we certainly could take on some debt, additional debt, and not be out of line with our historical practices of, you know, at least in the last decade or so. But one thing that I will point out to the council is a couple of statements. One statement made in the, in staff's response to the circle back, that any, any future geo-bond issue will likely not be able to be absorbed, which means that it will have to go on to the tax levy. So we issue a $10 million bond next year for the metro station. There's likely no other magic rabbits to pull out of a hat to fully abate that, meaning it will go on to the property, you know, the debt service will go on to the property tax. Not all 10 million of it at once, of course. The other thing that I'll point out, and this is something that Finance Committee deals with, and well, we all deal with, but I think maybe Finance Committee might be a little bit more aware of it, is regarding our debt limit policy, our debt limit policy and the attachment A that staff presented only deals with the debt issued via geo-bonds. And the point that I'm trying to make is, if you look at attachment A under M U F, M U F shows dollar amounts, beginning dollar amount debt across the number of years. None of that, just so everyone understands, reflects any of the I E P A loans that are, have been issued or will be issued in the future for the major capital improvements within the municipal utility fund, the bundle five that we've heard about, bundle six, all the stuff that we're looking at in the water rate study. And I understand why the debt policy is said as it is, because it's related to our taxing authority and I E P A loans, we really recover those costs through our water and sewer rates. But if you think about it from a residence perspective, it's money out of a residence pocket. And so I just say that to help connect the dots for everybody, because there are major dollar amounts contemplated, both in the water and sewer and the capital plan for the M U F, as well as, you know, looking out general obligation bonds that are contemplated in next year and in the future years. So just wanted to kind of circle that, circle that all together. And then if Director Coyle wants to respond in terms of the tax levy implications, maybe I missed something.
Sure. So if you look on page 10, which is the last page under attachment A, there is a total. So as stated in the, in the paragraph, we do assume that any future debt we would need to issue, we would need to fund with a tax levy, you know, unless we were to choose another revenue source. So that total column there, it starts at, you know, the 1.1 million, then 3.9. That would be the amount that we would need to levy each year to pay the debt service for all of the projects contemplated of those bond issues.
I think I'm not following you. Can you say which page?
So page 10, which should say total in the far right column, it's page 10 on board docs, but it says total forecasted future debt service. And so the first number there is 1,103,726. So that is the total of all of the debt service levies for that particular calendar year. So that's the amount that we would need to levy, assuming we didn't have another source for those debt service payments. And so each year, it lists out what that, that levy would be.
On top of like the 20 million-ish that we levy in total.
Correct.
Currently. Okay. Thank you very much. I did not see that item there. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on circle back one? And we'll move on to circle back two. This is Alderman Bram and Hill, the spreadsheet of the Bartels Vance Like consultant fees, information provided on attachment B. Is the information adequate, or do you wish to pursue? I don't know who to call on first, Alderman Bram and then Alderman Hill.
Thank you. I'm not sure about Alderman Hill, but I do have additional questions. I appreciate the information that was provided in the circle back list. And I think Alderman Hill was actually treading on these questions prior to discussing or during the discussion of the various TIFs. I'm looking for clarification on what both of, and I know City Manager kind of gave a quick sentence or two on it, but what do these individuals state in their contract on what their roles are? And what are these individuals doing for these various items? For an example, both Vance Like, and I don't know what his company's name is, and Bartels as well, it lists various accounts that, that are expenses for us, administration, planning slash zoning, museum, that one's pretty obvious to me, TIF four, five, and six. On some of them, I'll give an example, so people know where I'm going with this. And communications is not listed on here. I know in previous years, Bartels role, I don't want to name the individual, but his role was utilizing a communication capacity as well. So I'm assuming, big assumption here, but the contract doesn't mention that in this current contract, because there's, there's no dollars allocated there. But I have seen city staff and Mr. Bartels at the same meetings, be it city center or what have you, which is very redundant to me. So that's just one example. So I'm just looking for clarification on what of each of these individuals' roles do in each of these capacities that are being billed to.
I'm going to ask my cop to take that. He works with the budgets on, on it. I would say for, for my aspect, though, they provide consulting on various items, as I mentioned earlier, purchasing real estate, valuing real estate, selling real estate, also on our rental properties, they help us, at least, I'm sorry, Mr. Vance Like does. And then on Mr. Bartels, he works with the E D C, the Economic Development Commission, works very closely with our development manager. As you mentioned, the museum, he helps fundraise, with fundraising for the museum, and I believe that is paid for by the foundation. Yes, so that's paid for by the Heritage Foundation. And then I'll turn it over to Mike, if he has anything to add.
The City Manager pretty much hit that exactly what was going on. I think the difference between Bartels and Vance Like and the planning and zoning is that Bartels is more on the economic development side of it. He assists our business development manager with the Economic Development Commission, retention visits. Economic Development Commission, retention visits, and then the different TIFs depending on what type of business, even some type of business recruitment, meetings with businesses that I want to move into a certain TIF district, we just, we account for those in the TIF district rather under just planning, regular, the planning and zoning line item. That's more of the general economic development stuff, but if it's specific to one of our TIF districts, we'll build to a TIF district. But it can be as simple as we do retention visits in the different TIF districts. We've done blitzes this year in a couple of different districts, and he's part of that organizing it and helping us do it and being part of the, part of the blitz. So it's just a, a help to our business development manager. I think there's more than just what one person can do. And I think we found the most effective to use someone, especially like a Bartels or Van Slyke, who their, their institutional knowledge of Elmhurst and their, their business sense is very helpful to, to the city of Elmhurst.
And I would add that to Alderman Hill's question from earlier, would we consider hiring one person to do that? And when you look at salary and benefits, we find it much more economical to use the consultants rather than hiring one person to try to cover all this.
Alderman Bram?
Yeah. So I thought Mr. City Manager made a statement before, and I could be wrong, when Alderman Hill made, asked a similar question, was that Mr. Van Slyke was doing appraisals of property. Is that an accurate statement? Because the reason why I ask, right, because he's not an appraiser, so I want to make sure I heard that wrong.
No, I said he, he helps us value properties.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That's good to hear.
Does not do appraisals.
Good to hear. I guess that I've seen over the years that this, these two roles have progressed. Also, our administration has progressed as well. We, we've kind of been very fluent, not fluent, very flexible, I guess, in regards to our organizational changes. Right now, we have a economic development manager, which I don't know, I don't recall every year, but we didn't have at one time. And just seeing some of the redundancy of attending meetings, and maybe there's something that's offered, that in this case, I'm speaking of the Bartels role, maybe there's something offered there that a city staff member who's already physically present cannot offer, that might be the case. I haven't heard that or I haven't even seen it in the meeting minutes that I've read in the past where I do see staff as, as well as Mr. Bartels role at, at some of these meetings. So I do have concern over the need, and I'll just talk with, about the Mr. Bartels role at this point. I did reach out to Dave Odenberg in regards to the fundraising that Mr. Bartels has done, very complimentary, very happy with those services. In regards to, you know, retention visits, is that really something that we need a contractor or consultant to do? I know previous, what was it called at that time, Business Development Manager Coordinator, Erin Van DeWolfe, would do those herself, or at least she did a lot of them herself. I don't know if she did them all because I'm not here at City Hall every day. So I just see a lot of redundancies, again, in that role. To speak to the Van Slyke's role, that one's a little bit more difficult for me because I don't know exactly on how much is done in regards to relative property comparisons or doing comparative analysis, et cetera, to the various TIFs. So I'll kind of pause it there because I do see a lot of redundancy and see if Alderman Hill has anything else to say to it before I continue on.
Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. How long have we had consultancy relationships with these two individuals?
Bartels started during the recession. Van Slyke has been at least 20 years, probably 30 years.
So 15 to 30 years roughly. Okay. And is their, is their contract, is it annual? Is it multi, three-year? And when is it next up for renewal?
2024.
So I guess I'm going to say my comment is this. I feel like at this time, there needs to be some sort of, I feel, long-term decision-making or how we're going to sustain this role, right? What's our succession planning here? Is this going to be something we're always going to rely on these two individuals to fulfill as a role? Do we have other consultants we reach out to? Is this, are we relying on them for all this expertise? And if so, perhaps it's time to look at either. I feel, and again, this is City Manager and staff's purview, but to bring this sort of expertise in-house would be valuable instead of relying on two individuals to provide this for the coming decades. And I think it's also a lot of money. And so I think this is something where I would see value in bringing within the scope of somebody in-house and, and, or, you know, expanding somebody's duties or perhaps somebody else who can fulfill that role that already has an affiliation as a city employee. That's my feeling on it. I think, I think this is a, a large contract amount to me to rely on in perpetuity as it seems like we're doing right now.
Alderman Bastido.
So are these two full-time consultants that have other consulting clients? Or is this, I mean, because so it averages, it looks like Bartels is about 10 hours a week. If it's 500 hours a year, it's about 10 hours a week. And then Van Slyke would be about 20 hours a week on average. Is that right? And is this what they do full-time?
No, they both have other occupations also besides consulting with us.
Other consulting jobs.
Consulting jobs, I'm not aware of.
Okay. Neither one has other full-time jobs. They both do other consulting jobs like this.
Bartels would be a full-time job. I believe that, well, I don't know if it's, I don't know if either one are full-time. Yeah, they would be either part-time or consulting roles.
Okay.
Well, given that this is committee of the whole, I get to talk too. So I'm not sure why everyone gets, you know, there was a wave of this consultant questioning that went on about, you know, six, seven years ago. And I see it coming back. I'm not sure, I do agree with City Manager that these people, if we put them on the payroll and we rolled it in, it's increasing someone work, someone's workload. We're getting the benefit of tremendous expertise without having to pay vacation, health benefits, retirement funds. From my experience in working with consultants, this is a pretty low rate, 100 or 110 dollars an hour for this kind of experience. I'm not concerned, I mean, Assistant City Manager Cop is leaving. I guess we could have planned for it and said we could have moved him out sooner to get someone else in. But there's a depth of experience with the job and with the city that is going to be hard to replace. Now, there are graveyards full of people who couldn't be replaced, and they are. But what we have in these two individuals are people with deep experience who bring their expertise at a very reasonable rate to the city. You, what, if you don't know what Van Slyke does and you've been in an executive session, then you kind of missed it in terms of how things are zoned, looking up property investigations to find out how lots are drawn, to find missing tax deeds. He just has a tremendous amount of expertise that I don't really know that we would have anyone as a real estate consultant on staff that would bring that skill level. And I don't know that we'd want to pay to have anyone with that skill level. We use consultants for all kinds of things. We have long-term relationships with Tracy Cross. We bring in time after time our engineers because we have trusted relationships with our consultants. I dare say it's easier to replace another engineering firm than it is to replace the level of connection that Van Slyke has with the city. Similarly, Bartels, I remember there was some consultants that were, you know, in the crosshairs of certain aldermen. I think they finally bickered themselves out in front of one of our committees. And they, you know, their services weren't needed. But Ken Bartels, and I can tell you because, as I've said to people who bring more and more things to do for city staff, there aren't that many people up here. I mean, there's the City Manager, the Assistant City Manager, you've got our Business Development Director and our Communications Director. There's not a big staff up here. Ken Bartels fills in for a lot of functions that, that we need done, whether requests that I ask or the City Manager asks. He just has a wealth of experience. Should we bring him on full-time? I mean, I've gone to meetings, and I've attended with you, where there are more than one person there because then they go out and they need to be a participant in the meeting so they can go out and do their job. Erin Van DeWolfe didn't do a whole lot of retention visits. She worked with new businesses coming to town, as does Ken Bartels. So you think this is a lot of money? I don't think it's a lot of money. It's a very reasonable rate. It's a cap for people that have been as valuable to us as some of the long-term city staff. So I'm not really sure personally what the issue is with these two. But from my perspective, as someone who works with them on a continuing basis, they provide substantial value at a very, very reasonable rate. Anyone else?
Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. Question to city staff. Have there been any performance issues or concerns? Or have these consultants performed their job duties satisfactory or better than that?
There's never been a performance issue with either one of them as far as timeliness, accuracy, anything like that. We rely on them all the time.
Secondly, if I may.
Please.
I believe in the past years that this has been brought up, that this is a not-to-exceed. So for example, if there isn't a particular job that fits the expertise of one or the other of these consultants, and, you know, they do five hours a week or no hours in a week, then that's how it goes. We don't call on the consultant. They don't just come here and have a cup of coffee if there's nothing to do.
Correct.
Correct.
That was my understanding. I concur with the Mayor's comments. The, these consultants offer value. They come at a lower rate than paying benefits to a full-time employee. And I, I don't think that this is a situation from an expertise standpoint or from a bandwidth standpoint where we can stuff those activities into an existing employee's job. So that, if you want to get rid of these, then that would mean that you would have to hire a full-time employee to do these things and pay health benefits. And I'm confident that if we did that math, that it would come out to be more expensive and possibly lower, most likely lower quality work than what these two consultants provide. Thank you.
Others? Alderman Bastido?
Well, I mean, if you replace them, it would be with part-time employees, right? So you wouldn't have to pay for their benefits, presumably. But I put a lot, I'm just clarifying that. I put a lot of weight into what staff says, recommendations, which is why, you know, I've gone along with this. But I'm just, another point is it is up to an amount. But from what I remember when I was on the committee that reviewed the contracts, every year they go almost up within a few thousand dollars of that amount. So in essence, it is the full amount. From my experience, I don't think they've ever come in like 75%, 50%, 25% of the amount, right? It's usually within a few thousand of what their contract is, which is fine because that's what's budgeted, but.
Well, it's fine not only because it's budgeted, but we, they don't just come in and say, I think I'll work on this. We give them work to do.
Right.
So we're controlling how much work we give them.
Right. It's just almost the full amount.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add a piece of information. You mentioned a couple consultants that were, I think you used the words in the crosshairs, and that, that work, that contract ended. Subsequent to that is when we hired the Business Development Manager. So the first person was Erin Van DeWolfe, and now it's Heather Baracus. So that, you know, it was, this was not just someone who was coming and filling a role that wasn't necessary. It was a role that was really important, and we did end up hiring someone to be a full-time employee subsequent to their work ending.
Thank you. Alderman Bram then Alderman Bastido.
Yeah. And Steph can correct me if I'm wrong. One of the contracts actually mandates a certain number of hours that the, that the consultant is physically here. I don't recall if it was either Mr. Van Slyke or Mr. Bartels, but one of the contracts actually makes a statement that they do need to be here at City Hall. I, I don't have the contract in front of me. I forgot it at home. I'm not hinting at that we should hire another full-time person for this role. I don't know exactly what institutional knowledge that can't be gained by another individual or individuals. Yes, both individuals have been around the city of Elmhurst for a very long time. Case in point, Alderman Deuter just made mention of, you know, the two business, what's the acronym, Business Development Manager, or something along those lines, the two that we've had. But both of these individuals were contracted prior to that. And that was my comments from earlier. My comments from earlier were that our organization has changed over time, but we continue to employ these two specifically, these two consultants. If we change our organizational structure by adding a Business Development Manager over the last handful or so of years, why are we keeping the consultants on staff as well at the same number of hours and no change in number of hours over that same time, time period? I would agree with Alderman Bastido. I, I would say most. I'm not going to go out on the limit and say all the time. They've always reached the up to limit on each of the contracts each year, but they definitely do it most of the time. And again, I don't have any issue with that, but that's why I'm revisiting during the budget cycle, right? I don't know if the dollars amount, dollar amount for each of these consultants is what's needed today compared to before. When we were going through, when the city of Elmhurst was going through organizational changes in regards to economic development, there was a time that we had, I don't know, three, four people, right? We had a small team for economic development. I think City Manager was maybe even before your time. So, and we still had the consultants, I believe, my memory serves me correctly. No, we didn't.
Van Slyke was not. Prior to the recession, we had five employees in economic development.
Yeah. So I do know that we kind of did these cycles through the development, business development or economic development area. I look at the list, and I still haven't heard what do each of these individuals do for administration? What do they do for planning and zoning? I get what they do for the TIF. You know, retention visits, it's great, and I'm not saying it's not needed. One of the aldermen earlier said, you know, about another subject matter, that where do we draw that line, right? Where do we as a city draw the whole marketing line? I think it was in reference to city center versus the city of Elmhurst. But even in this piece of the pie, where do we draw the line? Are they needed? Is this, either of these individuals needed for retention visits? I mean, retention visits is building a relationship and a social activity. So do we need to hire a consultant for that? What is the benefit for that? I mean, that's the main thing I've heard so far in this discussion about utilization for, at least the one consultant for the various TIFs. I'm not even going to look at the museum. You know, Mr. Odenberg said that, you know, in this case, Mr. Bartels is very valuable in that capacity. And so I'm not even going to question that at all. I just still, as I sit here, and what I meant, Mr. Mayor, in regards to not knowing what they're actually doing, I get invoices that I requested, and thank you for that, that just says ED item, .25 hours, ED team, 1.5. It explains nothing what, what this particular consultant is doing. I don't know if there's some oversight to see, or if there needs to be, maybe there doesn't need to be. But it doesn't explain to me at all what is actually going on. You know, what, what these, this one particular consultant is actually billing for. I mean, I get the general category, but I don't have any knowledge. I mean, what was this TIF four item for 15 minutes? This TIF five item, this, what's ED stand for?
Economic Development.
Economic Development item. What were they discussing? Or, you know, what, what was the point of the visit or the phone call or what have you? That's what I meant in regards to not knowing what they were doing. I get Van Slyke's role, and I understand that, right? He's a real estate agent. We have tons of real estate agents in town. Myself was a former one. There's many real estate agents can do comparative market analysis, contact the assessors, understand properties, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not saying getting rid of either of them, at least as I sit here tonight, but I do question the dollars that are spent every year of consultants that we do have a, what I believe to be a larger organization for these specific areas. In the case before, in regards to Mr. Bartels, I already said, the contract include communication. I was the alderman that was being referenced by Mr. Mayor that has questioned this in the past. Then, since those discussions, all of a sudden, the contract doesn't talk about communications. But he was a consultant at that time. That role was applicable at that time while we hired a communication manager. Well, it started out to be a communication coordinator, then developed into a manager. And we continued to keep that role. That's why I'm continuing to question it. We continue to expand our full-time employees, but we continue to include consultants. I'm not saying that it's expensive. I'm not saying it's cheap or some way. I'm not saying it's cheap or somewhere in the middle. What I'm saying is I see a lot of this as redundancy. Incitational knowledge, I haven't really, other than the word being thrown out there and, you know, great experience in Elmhurst and everything else that was said tonight, I don't see, I haven't heard an explanation or response that really proves to me that there's incitational knowledge that couldn't be getting, gotten through staff or elsewhere. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion, at least on the Bartels role, to cut the budget for 2024 in half or 50%, roughly 50%, down to 25 grand, I'll say. From 55 grand to 25 grand.
Is there a second? Alderman Hill, second discussion. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I, the, the way I see this is, you know, any part-time employee, whether it comes from an intern from the university, you know, these are valued assets that we've been leveraging for numerous years, and they aren't going to, you know, be available for years to come. Actually, I think the discussion that we should be having is that when they do not become available to the city, what will the city do? And so there's, there's no doubt in my mind that, you know, these individuals are bringing value to the city. And allows us, personally, I think our, our city staff is pretty lean, you know, compared to other communities. So, so with this type of, you know, price point, it allows us to get things done for the, the residents of, of the city. I'm not going to question or micromanage how staff, you know, delivers that. They're leveraging a very, you know, reasonably priced consultant to get work done for the city. So with that, I, I can't support the motion. Thank you.
Alderman Veremis.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Alderman Brennan. I have served on retail grant or did serve for the past three years when I was a member of the Finance Committee. Mr. Bartels was one of our consultants during all those meetings. I am now part of the Economic Development Commission. Mr. Bartels is also, serves on that with us. I think he brings a lot of value in the close to four, three and a half years now that I've been an alderman, and I've had the chance to work with him. We have a city staff of 300 employees, roughly. I think we run lean to Mayor Wood Alderman Brennan had said. And we have a community where our needs are constantly changing, and we have done a lot over these last several years. So I think that this is a small price to pay for what we want to provide to this community. So, thank you. I support both of these consultants in the proposed budget.
Alderman Tulluto.
I agree with Alderman Brennan and Alderman Veremis on the motion, but I, I think it's important to ask staff a question before we vote. If the motion passes and the budget for Mr. Bartels is reduced from 50,000 to 25, I believe that that was the motion, how, how, what, what would you do to fill that gap? What, you know, advantages or disadvantages would that bring to the city and the, you know, completion of work that needs to be done?
City Manager. And just to be clear, so we're reducing a line item that's not necessarily directly tied to Bartels consulting. So if we terminate, if we reduce Bart, the, the number of hours by half means we can't hire somebody else for the other half. It means we're reducing the, the fund line, not just who we pay it to. City Manager.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure how the motion was directed, but keep in mind, 12,000 of that is for the museum, which is paid for by the foundation. So that, I guess, really cuts it more than just by the 25,000. If we're, I don't know if that holds the museum 12,000 or if it cuts the museum in half for fundraising. I, I guess that's a question that you'd have to parse. So to the mayor's point, it, it doesn't give us funding to do anything else as far as a consultant goes. But I would point out that, as was stated earlier, when we brought in the communications manager, there was some redundancy with the Bartels contract and the communications manager, but eventually that Bartels contract was reduced. And as we have moved away from some of the, I guess, cable shows, I'll call them, and TV shows that were done, that has been reduced as well. So I don't have a direct answer as to what might not get done from what Mr. Bartels is doing right now.
Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think it's a worthwhile discussion to have, how much we use consultants generally and these two consultants and the roles they play and things like that, succession plans. But I'm not sure that we're going to reach the best possible decision by discussing it right now at the committee as a whole. I think, you know, the contract's up for renewal next year. It's going to come through, I think, P A and S or maybe our committee. You know, I think that we can do a much better service to it and the city by discussing it then and figuring out what the optimal solution is rather than, you know, doing it from the dais tonight. So I won't support the motion. Thank you.
Others? Alderman Hill.
Thank you. I'm not sure I totally disagree with Alderman Jensen's approach to it either, even though I did second the motion. I will say, without any comparatives and not knowing the field well, and forgive me, I work in academia and you get my $182 worth every month here on council, but I will say it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem cheap to me. Maybe it is, but you know, 100,000 or 99,000 a year for 20 hours a week of work? I mean, again, I work in academia, but that doesn't seem cheap to me in terms of the maximum annual total for one of the consultants, yes.
We're talking about Bartels on this motion.
Um, oh, that's right. So I'm, I guess I'm not talking to the motion itself. I mean, I would say that Bartels at 10 hours a week and 50,000 also seems like a lot. It seems expensive to me. So I don't think I have the right frames of reference to understand what an affordable or good rate is with terms of, in terms of consultancy, but it, it does seem like a lot for both contracts.
Alderman Ardini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, before voting, I would need to know some clarification about what City Manager brought up about the 12.5, that's the Heritage Foundation money. What exactly would we be voting on?
I don't think that's a City Manager question, to tell you the truth. It's a City Council question. Alderman Bram.
So I'll, I'll try my best here. The reason why I didn't craft a motion prior to coming tonight is because these fees are all across the board, right? There's different accounts that they come from. So for me, it's very difficult to pretty much say where it should be cut. My intention, and maybe I can ask Mr. Mayor yourself for some assistance if I, if the motion needs to be recrafted or modified. My intention is not to touch any of the dollars that is allocated for the museum. I think I stated that already. My intention is to reduce, and I didn't take my motion as reducing the overall budget for both of the consultants, but if that's how it is, because it's a consultant line item through each of these sections, I'm just looking to reduce the, I'll just even throw a dollar amount out there, reduce the budget by $25,000 for the consultants. How that needs to be crafted, because all these different line items are out the budget, if it's just that one, then that's fine.
Alderman Bram, let me see if I, so what is the contribution from the museum?
$12,000.
All right, so if you wanted to, if you're looking at just the Bartels budget, which is 50, and if you take out the 12, you've got 38. So do you want to reduce that? Is your, you can amend your motion to leave the museum contribution and reduce the remaining 38, I suppose, by some number, if your second agrees?
Yes, okay, I will make, I'll amend my motion. Can I?
See what the second says, but what, what would you like the amendment to be, to reduce it by 20?
I don't know, it's difficult with the whole museum piece in there. I would like to amend the motion to keep the museum dollars as-is and reduce the consultant fees by 50%, which is the remaining, right?
Well, 50%, now you're adding the 99 and the 50. So now you're taking even bigger amount. You mean, because if we're just looking at the Bart, Bartels contract, then it'd be 19,000.
All right, by 50% of the Bartels contract. But I don't see this account number being separated, right? It's just consultants. That's my difficulty. It doesn't have consultant one, consultant two.
If you look at Attachment B, which is the schedule and memo, there are the account numbers that match up with where the expenditures come from.
So essentially, you got the 12 for the museum shown under the Bartels budget, and then you have the remaining monies broken out between planning and zoning and the three
Yes, but if you look at the budget distribution, there's various account numbers, right? So I would typically make a motion to reduce or increase for a specific account number. I was trying to not make this complicated and say something along the lines of, I want to make a motion to leave as-is the budget line item or account number of 1108080530100, which is the museum, right? And then reduce by $25,000, say, because that just complicates things.
It's, I'll help if I can, but it's your motion. I mean, you were going to reduce it by 25, but if you don't want.
Reduce it by 25,000 excluding the museum line item. Does that work better?
Other than the museum line item.
Yeah, and simpler.
All right. Is that something you're willing to second, Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, if I can add to the discussion before I, do I second this now or can I contribute to the discussion? I would have to second the amendment to the original motion now.
You would? Otherwise, the amended motion falls off the table and it goes back to the original, which is not clarified well.
But we'll indulge for a second. What would you like to say, Alderman Hill?
I would like to say I'm a little confused at this point, and based on comments I heard, I think since this is going to be discussed when the contract is renewed, it might be best to do it then, because it seems like there's some levels of complexity here.
There's levels of complexity, but you know, another alderman made a comment about micromanaging. This is the budget cycle, right? This is where we actually say, we want to spend X dollars, we want to plan to spend X dollars for all the line items. That's the purpose of the cycle. There's been great debate in past years about what comes first, right? The budget or actually the issues at hand? What's being referenced by Alderman Hill now is that the issue at hand, which is coming due next year in 2024, should come first prior to the budget. I was trying to do the opposite.
All right, so just to make sure we stay on track here.
I'll withdraw the motion. It'll be that easy. I'll withdraw the motion.
Are you allowing him to withdraw the motion since you're the second?
I will allow it.
Motion withdrawn. Anything else on this particular circle back?
Bless you.
Thank you.
All right, on to circle back item number three. Provide a timeline of planning projects included in the budget. Alderman Tulluto, this is yours.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the information. I really appreciate the Gantt chart. I really wanted to just ask the follow-up question, you know, as staff went through the process of looking at the timing, does staff have any concerns now that you've kind of laid it out about potentially not being able to provide quality work? Or is it, you know, laid out in a way, you know, where I see how you have staff involvement and then a consultant involvement, staff involvement, et cetera? How does staff feel after looking at that and going through that brief assessment about the way that it's timed out?
Actually, we feel better about it now that we actually built the Gantt chart and everything. It really clarified what the line, but same thing happened like with the zoning orders. If it gets to the point where it gets too complex, like the subdivision orders was actually in this year's budget also, we just said, you know what, this is getting too complex, moving it forward, but we don't, we, we don't think that next year will, we think we should, it'll be fine, honestly.
Okay.
Because a lot of those things are where the public works too, so that it's asking me a shared, when it comes to the staff part, it's a, it's a shared responsibility too, so.
Okay, great. Well, then I'm, I'm happy.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good question, Alderman Tulluto. Anyone else have questions on circle back three? Circle back four. This one is Alderman Hill and Alderman Brennan, a list of items included in professional services for 24 and 25. Has this answered your question or do you have additional?
No additional questions, Mayor.
Circle back five. Can the replacement of the fuel island be?
That's fine.
Oh, I didn't see you have your hand up. Go ahead, Alderman Brennan.
No, thanks for the information. Just the, the TIF analysis and reports. Not quite sure what that is. Can you speak to that?
So the TIF analysis and reports would be for any item, if we were considering a TIF, any item that wouldn't be covered in one of the actual TIFs. So if, if the city was looking at creating a TIF district, for example, that expense would have to be paid out of the general fund, the planning and zoning budget, because it wouldn't qualify to be paid for by one of the TIF funds. It could be, it could be reimbursed by the TIF if the TIF actually did get, did get set up and was approved.
So the reality is this may be an unused budget item. I mean.
It, it may be if there's, isn't a need for it, yes.
Right, thank you. No further questions.
Very good. All right, number five. Can the replacement of the fuel island be deferred with the intent of increasing the sanitary sewer projects? Alderman Bram, this is yours.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the information, the additional information. I, upon deeper diving into this, I, I did notice it was, I believe, scheduled to be done in 2023 and has been deferred to 2024. So I do have some concerns there. Do we have any idea? And I don't know if this UST actually has this capability, but I mean, is there any corrosion detection showing for this UST? I know typically, I don't know if it's EPA required or not, but you have corrosion detection on a UST, you have fuel spillage, and I thought there was one other item that's required.
I'm going to ask Stan Bulicki to come up and address those questions.
Thank you. There's, um, there's a tank monitoring that has to take place, that does take a look at things like, you know, leaks that might be occurring, and we don't have any of those now. But obviously, this, this is something that we would prefer to avoid occurring in the first place, because the, the consequences of that are serious. So we, we do have monitoring in place, but, and, and right now, it's, it's fine, but we don't want to push it to that point where we have a problem.
Gregor, are there any insurance implications on this?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to bring that up. The Finance Committee tonight, they talked about the insurance renewal, and part of the questioning was about the fuel tanks and our availability to even access insurance when they're this old.
Yeah, the question that I didn't get was, I get about the leakage, but what about corrosion of the tank itself? Do we have corrosion detection on these tanks? And if so, is there any issue there?
There, there isn't a system to specifically detect corrosion occurring within the, in the tanks, no.
Okay. All right. I mean, for this item, it was kind of twofold, and it was phrased that way. I, I was looking for monies to increase our sanitary lining, and I thought that this would be a possibility. As I already stated, when I saw that it was already delayed it one year, and the life expectancy is approximately 25 years old, and that's where this one's at, or I don't know if there's one or multiple. I'm fine with the response and really have no other question on this item.
All right, anyone else with a question on this item? Circle back six. Determine the prioritization of capital projects primarily focused on those with bond funding. Alderman Tulluto says C number one.
Yeah, I mean, I think all the data you provided in one is understood. The only follow-up I would have is, after going through that process, from the time that the KEV was created with the implied bond issues for the various projects, has staff had any change of heart in terms of timing of any of those projects? has staff had any change of heart in terms of timing of any of those projects?
Difficult to answer. Yes, obviously, we have concern over keeping the tax rate down as well. We see, as you pointed out in one of the first meetings, we see that need as it comes about, and so we bring it to the council's attention so that we can move forward on that. So as we take it through a committee process, that's really the best way to kind of prioritize all of those items. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, the answer is no. You stand behind the CEB as it is, which I get. And I, you know, I think with my longer view of the city council process, having served since 2014, it's often difficult, I think, for city council to... We make decisions one project at a time, and I think that's part of the underlying of what I'm trying to express to the council through this process. You know, we're going to end up approving a budget, and then, you know, Public Works is going to get the metro station project, and then we're going to get the, you know, the water and sewer rate study, and we look at each project in isolation, even though we all know that it's part of a bigger budget. And I think, you know, through just, I think, education and calling attention to some of these things through this process is what I've been attempting to do through the budget review process, is to call some attention to that so that we all can make informed decisions and not potentially as isolated project by project as sometimes happens in the past, because these are bigger projects hitting faster than they have in my years of service to date. That's my comments, so, and I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Circle back seven. Why are no funds budgeted in 23 and 24 for concrete street resurfacing? Alderman Bram, this is yours. Circle back?
Yes, sorry, let me go back to that page. So my understanding, and I don't want to read it verbatim, but it says, "Concrete streets have much longer life cycle than asphalt streets, and therefore, the deferment of the planned resurfacing would have little to no impact."
Bless you.
Bless you. The proposed five-year CEB, it just talks about, you know, rebudgeting at that $540,000 per year level, et cetera. It's an interesting statement to me, because this was a study the city of Elmhurst did back in 2005. In here, there's streets rated below average in 2005 in this area, in this concrete street area. In 2005, this is when this study was done. And there was one in here that was rated a 37 out of 100 in 2005. But the statement is saying that no impact. Delaying items, no impact, not a big deal. Even though there's streets that were studied close to 20 years ago that were pretty much in poor condition. So I'm concerned with the feedback on why this current fiscal year and the future fiscal year that there's no dollars budgeted. As I sit here, there's a memo back in 2014, not a memo, sorry, a report from the Public Works Committee, and there is a majority and minority, the majority passed for budgeting and planning and actually having a two-year plan. That was back in 2014, to do all the concrete streets, to resurface all the concrete streets in the city of Elmhurst, not just the northeast section. Since that time, and I showed before, right, at the last meeting, budgeted versus spent. There's, if we follow the current budget plan, there's four years since 2014, when this plan was developed, that no monies are being spent on concrete streets. You know, COVID in this discussion has been brought up, and that's why, and I believe it might have even been in the response, it might not have said COVID, but it talked about not having the dollars, had to budget accordingly. Well, the same year that there was no dollars budgeted for concrete street resurfacing, if I look at the asphalt street page, there is an increase from 3.3 million, and I'm speaking budget now, not actual spent, because I don't have those dollars amounts. But in the budget year of 2022, was budgeted at 3.3 for that same fiscal year. In 2023, it was budgeted for close to 4 million, 3.95. But we spent zero on resurfacing concrete streets. But we increased the budget for asphalt street resurfacing by 540,000 to zero, but increased the resurfacing for asphalt streets from 3.3 to 3.95. Almost, coincidental or not, almost the same amount that was deducted from the concrete streets from 540 to zero. But we're saying that we needed to do fair budgeting. Well, how's that fair budgeting? We increased one line item, but zeroed out the other line item for 2023 and upcoming its plan for 2024. Let me see if I have the memo or the report here. Concrete streets, I've been told lifespan, you know, just like asphalt streets, right? It's hard to predict. It depends on many different conditions. But this report that came out of Public Works that I referred to before in 2014 makes a statement that they should last, the longevity should be between 50 and 75 years. And I can't find the... Oh, there it is. This same report also says the concrete streets in Elmhurst were constructed in the 40s through the 80s. I don't know which ones were constructed in the 80s, but... So that would put it way past, the concrete streets way past, those who were constructed in the 40s, 50s, and 60s way past the lifetime, lifespan of concrete streets. But we didn't spend any money this year, and currently, as we sit here today, we have no dollars planned to spend next year. Prior to the 2014 plan, from 2008/9, because back then, we didn't do calendar year equals fiscal year, we did from April to April, from 2008/9, budget 600,000, spent zero. 2009/10, budgeted a whopping 200,000, spent zero. 10/11, no budget, no money spent. No budget, no money spent in 11 or 12. And then finally, in 11 or 12 and 13, there was 313,000 spent. And I already showed that since that time, which there is four or five times that there is no dollar spent on concrete streets, we have four more times that no dollars are either budgeted and/or spent for concrete street resurfacing while we continue to increase the budget for increasing asphalt streets, or increasing resurfacing asphalt streets. Again, we had a plan of 12 years, and now we're stating that we're not even going to be anywhere close to that, which I wouldn't imagine we would, because we've not spent any dollars on the concrete street resurfacing for at least four years, if we move forward, which we should be at the end of resurfacing for these streets, and then it would be part of the combined budget of resurfacing all asphalt streets in town. I find it hard to believe that we're going to meet 2032, as noted in the response, if we continue the way we have been with our planning and spending on the concrete street resurfacing. Again, it was supposed to be a 12-year plan? Way, way, way past that. We haven't spent, probably in the last 20 years, 10 years without spending a dime on the concrete street resurfacing. Proposed, four years, not being spent. I'll defer to my fellow Alderman.
Before you defer to the Alderman, does city staff want to address any of the points, or would you like to defer to the other Alderman?
I think I would defer to the other Alderman. I don't have any, I don't have the reports in front of me that Alderman Bram is referencing to talk about which streets were paved when, unfortunately.
All right, Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I wonder if the staff could explain how they determine these budget year by year and what they take into consideration when they're allocating dollars toward street repair, street repaving.
Yes, thank you. Be happy to do that. I'll start, and then if Director Bellicky wants to add to that, that's great. So our engineering group goes out or brings in, depending on how deep we're going to get in the review of it, to determine the level of service of each street, to see what cracks have formed, any potholes, things like that, just to assess all of the roads within the community. And then we look at how many, we rank them to determine which ones need to be paved and sections and what that might cost, and then try to balance that against each year's budget, understanding that we don't have an unlimited budget. Is really how we go about that. And what I would point out on page four of the circle back memo under this item, if we have a concrete street and an asphalt street that are at the same level of service that need work, the asphalt street is going to deteriorate a lot quicker than the concrete street, which might put that asphalt street ahead of a concrete street for that year. Stan, I think I'm over my skis after that, so I'll turn it over to you.
I think you covered it pretty well. I think the one thing I would add is that when it comes to our street maintenance activities, our overall kind of philosophy is that we want to maintain, we look at pavement preservation, that's one of the things we talk about. So we want to invest maintenance dollars in those streets while, I guess, at a point where it maintains the street to a point that we don't have to reconstruct the entire street. And that's the pavement deterioration for asphalt and concrete is different. So for every, for every dollar that we invest, let's say, in roadway maintenance, if we get to a point where we have to reconstruct the entire roadway, that $1 becomes $4 or $5 to do the same, to essentially do the same thing. So overall, we look at pavement preservation. That paving, you know, the city's paving program is something over the past couple of years that has fluctuated. I think maybe it was one of the years, maybe just before I got here, that paving was either not done or very minimally done, because there were concerns about the overall financial impact of what COVID might mean for the city. So I think that accounts for a little bit of, kind of, the, at least, more recent increases that you see as far as contract paving, as well as unit price increases for asphalt in particular. You know, I would say with respect to the concrete streets, the biggest thing I would say with those is that there's kind of a writability, you know, issue on those, but that if you look at the concrete street resurfacing program, the intention is to keep the concrete street in place and use that existing concrete as the base for the street with a new riding surface. So that tells me something about the structural integrity of the streets up there, that the intention is to to keep that in place and essentially provide a new riding surface. So I think when we kind of look at priorities overall within the street paving program, we're trying to, within the context of dollars that are available, look at those areas where we think we can best preserve the pavement that is there, and, you know, and ideally, to be able to do that resurfacing sooner would be great. Certainly, we wouldn't turn down the opportunity to do that. We're trying to kind of look within that limited pot of funding we have and prioritize those dollars in that way. So that's just kind of an overall philosophy of, I think, how we're looking at it and prioritizing.
Just a follow-up question to, I think, fully understand something you said. You talked about the asphalt streets because they deteriorate so quickly. If the bottom layer is damaged, then it costs a lot more to repair, right? So you're trying to troubleshoot and get to the, you know, replace things when they're going to be most cost-effective?
That's correct.
Thank you. I appreciate that information.
Okay, Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Bellicky, now, when you say replacing the riding surface on the concrete street, is that with more concrete? Are you changing it to be asphalt on top? Is that...
It'll be an asphalt riding surface when that work is done.
So eventually, we'll have a bunch of streets that are all asphalt, and we have to maintain that every 15 years rather than some concrete streets that would update every 50 or whatever years.
Correct. So that a portion of that concrete is scheduled to remain and will act as the base of the street with a new asphalt riding surface over the top of it.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So a concrete surface or road, if it is, you know, I don't know, pothole's a common term for asphalt roads, but you know, I'm assuming that concrete probably cracks, and maybe there's also comparable pothole. Are those situations replaced with, you know, patched with asphalt? Or how do you deal with a defective road when it's cement?
So there is a, in the city's budget, there is a program for concrete patching. And so in, there are certain instances where panels of the concrete streets are removed and replaced if they get to deteriorate to a certain point. On a more, you know, if there's a minor, more minor issue that can be filled in with asphalt, that is, that's sometimes done, but it's not really ideal. It's, obviously, it's better to come back and kind of replace a panel of concrete if possible.
So if I'm understanding the response, if I'm understanding the response to the circle back item, so by 2032, it's anticipated the concrete streets will be resurfaced, and based on our dialogue here, does that mean all concrete streets will be gone because we've resurfaced them with asphalt?
I wouldn't say they'd be gone. They'll provide the base to a new asphalt layer of roadway.
Well, but in essence, they're gone.
You wouldn't see the concrete, correct.
But we know.
So in essence, we're replacing, you know, the cement. We're not going in and redoing cement roads. We're going to...
Correct.
Over there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Jensen, Alderman Cahill, sorry.
It's probably the only Alderman here that's actually laid both concrete and asphalt on this council here. May provide some clarity there. Asphalt has a 20-year life cycle typically. We should be at a 15-year life cycle. We're not right now because of budgets. However, concrete, if we keep chasing our 20 years, we're never going to get to the concrete, because we're going to continue to chase the asphalt. So we do need to make a change in how we look at this and start maybe doing a 50/50 share and going after some of the concrete, because there is some benefits to it. If we can get to it quicker and do, so what you do is you mill the top layer of the concrete off, because you can't just keep layering asphalt on top of it, because you have flow problems and all sorts of curb issues. But you, when you lay it down, you also have to do concrete cuts to make sure that when that concrete gets voids of water in it and freezes, it causes it to lift. So it's all these different things. But the sooner we can get to that and put asphalt down on it, the better off we're going to be long-term. And so I would really suggest that we look at, you know, changing how we approach the concrete and maybe give a little more attention to it, because we're going to always be chasing the asphalt with the 20-year program that we're on right now.
Director, so following up on Alderman Cahill's comment, is the 2032 goal to make sure that those concrete streets get the asphalt cover within that time period, those that need them?
Yeah, that's correct.
Alderman Bram, you were next.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, the plan was, and the plan is that, back in 2014, was a 12-year plan. So if you add 12 years to 2014, that's 2026, we should have been done with all the concrete street resurfacing. Since that plan has been instituted, I've said it once, I'll say it again, we have not spent a dime in four fiscal years. So in theory, that would be 2014 plus 12, which is 26, plus four is 2030, if we follow the current plan of not spending any dollars next year, approximately, give or take a year. Forgot the other points I was going to make, but... Forgot the other points I was going to make, but what I wanted to highlight is that back, and I touched on it in my comments earlier, but in 2014, we have a plan. The city council approved the plan. The city council actually, thank you for your comments, is, was planning to do exactly what Alderman Cahill said. Grind down the surface of the concrete, use the current concrete streets as a base and asphalt, as I responded before. Then therefore, anything with any asphalt top layer is just thrown in the pool, right? Thrown in the pool with the rest of the asphalt resurfacing budget. That was the discussion back in 2014. I, I can't express enough that prior to that plan, there was multiple years, four-plus years then, my time's up, four years then, from 2009 to 2013, that no dollars were spent. Now we go from 2014 to where we sit here today, no dollars spent on concrete street resurfacing.
Alderman Bram, in the interest of just, I think you're repeating what you've already said.
Well, but there's questions after I repeat, I said it the first time, that was answered when I first spoke. At this time, since I was cut off, I will make a motion to add to account number 1106061-570140.
Just to make it easy, you have a page and then it'll?
So essentially, add to that page the restored value of $540,000 for concrete street resurfacing, which is a priority A item.
All right, so on page CEB 32, for year 2024, you want to add to?
The previous budget amount of 540,000, correct.
All right. All right. Is there a second? Alderman Jensen, discussion. Alderman Brennan.
So I think I can get my head around this if the, the motion were amended. I think we should reduce, and again, I, I understand the, the debate that we're having here with respect to concrete streets. And I'm also sensitive to the fact that, that I, I trust the judgment of the, the public works department. That said, I just don't think we can magically just add $540,000. And I, my question would be if we took the 540 out of, you know, the, the street resurfacing program on KEB 31, what, what's the, what's the net impact? I'm not current on the, the situation. I understand the prioritization that the city, the city staff's gone through. I mean, cutting $540,000 out of the street resurfacing program and shifting it over to concrete, is that, what's staff's point of view on that?
Just, and it's sort of, obviously, just off the top of my head, conversation, but my, my concern is that without a little bit of further analysis of, of kind of what streets are in the program, what we're looking at for next year, is that potentially we have some asphalt streets that are close to the point where if they are not maintained with resurfacing, you know, typical resurfacing activities, that they could fall into a category of needing to be reconstructed, because then I don't know if, if those get sort of moved out of the program for next year and let's say into 2025. It's a little bit of a domino effect. And that, that is my, I guess, my concern is that we really want to minimize a situation where we have streets that need reconstruction because of the cost impact to that. I want to take a look a little more closely, if, you know, if we, if we had the, the time and ability to kind of tell you whether that is actually true or not, but that's, that's a concern that I have. The other thing I would say to Alderman Cahill's point, which was a good one, in that historically, we talk about a 20-year life cycle on, on asphalt pavement, but really, more and more, we're not, we're not really seeing that. And that's a function of the raw materials that are being used are not, they're, they're not as good a quality as they were, you know, years ago. That's one of the reasons why we do some of the things that we do, like the Reclamite program, to try to kind of reinfuse the, the asphalt with some of those compounds that it needs to last. But it's, it's a stretch to say that we'd be getting 20 years out of an asphalt street. So it's, that's a concern that I have.
So, but based on that, you know, my, my gut says to, to support the, the motion, but without that analysis or some shift of dollars out from elsewhere, I, I won't be able to support the motion this evening. But I, I, I'm interested in understanding, you know, staff's point of view with respect to, could we carve out $540,000 out of the resurfacing program without jeopardizing and making it more costly for some of the priority streets? I understand the, the dilemma that we're facing. Thank you.
Alderman Toledo.
I agree with Alderman Brennan, and I could support the shift, but I guess I would, instead of prescribing to staff, like, well, let's take it out of the street resurfacing program, could staff come back? Could we table this motion? Could staff do a little bit of some, you know, looking at what they could, if this was a priority for the city council to put 540,000 into the concrete street resurfacing in 2024, so basically advancing the spending by one year, how could that be accomplished in keeping the budget flat? So what, what would staff recommend coming back? And you probably can't answer that right now, so out of the interest of, you know, getting a good answer, you know, would the folks that made the motion be open to waiting, getting staff's input on how they would solve for that? And then the city council can make a decision based on the trade-offs based on that?
Let me ask a couple of questions. So did city staff, when you come up with the budget, do you evaluate, do you have like a chart where you evaluate all the streets and the useful life?
There, every, every so many years, we contract for an outside firm to come in and do a pavement condition analysis for us. I think the last one that we did was probably 2020. So it's a few years old, and I think we're, actually, we're on the cusp of looking at updating that here probably next year. So, but that, that's, we use that data, that data point, and we use that to plan for, you know, a few years out, and then we'll update it.
And are there concrete streets that have been identified that are in condition that is, that are worse than the asphalt streets that you're proposing to do in 2024?
As, as we're sitting here, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, but I know we have that information, like, we can provide it to the city council.
And the, the study that you would do, that the updated study we do in 2024 would then give us a better picture of where we are in terms of all of the streets?
It would, it would give us, because it would reflect the work that's been done over the past couple of years, as well as obviously the continued, you know, aging and deterioration that's happened on other streets in the meantime. So it would, it would be updated.
All right. And I, I don't think you saw the 2014 study, but you're projecting that, what is the basis for which you project that all of the concrete streets would be, with no funding in 2024, would be completed by 2032, I think it was?
In, in terms of just the, the funding that's?
Well, I mean, is your projected funding going to make, does that arrive at another false ending, or are the streets actually done by 2032 under the way you've budgeted to the future?
That is, that is the best information that we have right now. That's based on unit prices that we have seen recently for similar work that's been, been done, as well as what we know of the condition of, of the streets at this point.
Thank you. Alderman Bram.
If this latest study was done in 2020, the budget for a resurfacing asphalt streets in 2021 was at $3 million, and then subsequent years increased by $100,000 for the next three years. 2022, all, yeah, all four or five years was budgeted at 3.3. So that's in 2022. Going on the premise that the study was done in 2020, for two years, it was $3 million, then 3.3 million. A jump from 2022 to 2023, the first fiscal year this year, where asphalt streets, or concrete streets were zeroed out for budget, it went up $650,000. So if the study was done in 2020, I'm not sure what shifted in priorities for a tune of $650,000 increase, which is pretty close to the 540 that was zeroed out over the two, two years. And that's not including the small additional projects, which I didn't mention tonight, which is essentially resurfacing asphalt streets. So you got the close to $4 million, then you got Alma at $50,000 next year, $418,000 for Villa, $171,000 for Northwest Elmhurst, whatever that means. So you're talking 4.6 roughly fiscal year next year. Following year, 5.2 for asphalt streets. Following year, close to $6 million. Again, study in 2020, why is there this rampant increase? If we would use that study for the next year, even if it wasn't used for 2021, I would assume that it was used for 2022. But then in 2023, you jump another $650,000 when that study's been on the shelf for a couple of years and not doing anything for the concrete streets. Talk about fear inequitable. This section was planned to have a 12-year plan, but, and the council approved it, but we're not following the plan at all, at all. And now we're saying that from 2026, and the, what was proposed as the end of the plan, to push it out to 2032, if it's budgeted accordingly, including cost increases and everything else in these upcoming years, which we know is going to continue to happen. But we've been at a steady rate of 540 for a while now. I, I, I'm not making this information up. I, I spent a lot of hours researching what was budgeted over the last 11 years for asphalt streets and concrete streets. I get that concrete streets are going to last longer, but the city themselves said 50 to 70 years. These concrete streets are over 50 years old. I don't know if any of them are 75. I don't have that data. But the city itself put it in writing, 50 to 75 years old. But we're saying that there's a higher priority to increase the asphalt streets by 650,000, not including those other projects, which is probably another $1 million, if not more. There's some disparity here. I don't see when a document done close to 20 years ago says some of these concrete streets are in poor condition, that we just negate that and say, nah, they're good enough, they're ridable.
Alderman Bastido.
So I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I think, you know, staff did have this before we got the final version in there, the plan to do concrete streets. They had to take it out because there's many tough decisions that go into this. So I really want to respect that, and I appreciate that that was a tough decision, and there is still a plan to get to these streets. What I'm hearing is that there could be support for your amendment. However, people kind of want to know, well, where is the money going to come from? So I really liked Alderman Toledo's suggestion that we kind of give chance, staff a chance to come up with some suggestions about where the money could come from and see if this plan would work. Because I'm hearing some support, but it might be hard, as we're sitting up here, to go find money somewhere else in this thick document that everyone's going to agree is less important than this. So are you, am I allowed to ask? Like, I would like to recommend that we take the suggestion of being open to this, but let, giving staff a chance to come back to us with suggestions.
Well, we can, let me add this, you know, I've heard this general claim of inequity, but what I've heard staff says, they've evaluated the streets, and we've got to do the asphalt ones, the, the concrete ones. At some point, we will, whether they'll last 50, 60, or 75 years, they're not at the point where the asphalt streets are. So we have this, our staff analysis saying we've got to prioritize asphalt now because the concrete streets can wait. They've not identified any particular concrete streets that are in such a poor shape that need to be done, so I guess if we're going to, I know you got the 2014 study, but that?
2005.
2005.
2005 study.
Okay. But if the asphalt streets are worse, I guess if we're going to defer it, then we'll ask, we should ask staff to do the, that analysis too, to say, because the director's saying, we got asphalt streets that if we don't do them, are going to maybe cause a four or five multiple in cost where the concrete streets don't have to be done now. So I don't get a vote. I just get to talk a committee of the whole, but I don't see it. But your request is, well, you're asking to, let's get some comments, but you're sort of suggesting that the motion might be tabled, whatever, or something.
Which was Alderman Toledo's suggestion.
Yeah, I had a, thank you, Mayor. I had a point of order question, was, did Alderman Toledo make a motion to table? No. Okay, then I'll make a motion to table for this topic until next meeting.
So tired, I can't even think of.
He's just making it up as he goes.
So you, all right, so you want to table the motion to the next meeting?
Tabling is privileged.
Pardon me?
Tabling is privileged, right? It, it
Oh, it is a privilege. Is there a second? Second, Alderman Nardini. I don't think there's discussion on that one.
I don't think so.
There is. No. Mr. Starin.
We're going to the next meeting of the city, of the committee of the whole.
Motion noted.
Motion to continue.
Check with Bob.
It's made.
Let's see what Bob says.
I trust him. It's made an expert.
I don't think the cab is the right place to make an amendment.
Yes, I am.
I don't see that it's not debatable. Any discussion on the motion to table? Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have, I'm not, I'm not for tabling. I am, should I defer back to you and let you continue with those who want to discuss that? I wanted to go back to Alderman Bram's motion, so I'll, I'll defer back.
The motion before the council is now the motion to table. That's, that's all we're discussing now. Anything on that one?
I will not want to table it.
All right.
Thank you.
Alderman Deuter.
The discussion is on whether or not to table the, this issue, so the motion to amend the budget. Is that right? Can I just clarify? The, the proposed amendment is to the cab. Is that right? Wouldn't we, if we're talking, I, I'm used to the amendments taking place in the operating budget. Does an amendment to the cab really get us what we need? Or are we, should we be considering an amendment to the operating budget? And if that's the case, are we, are we talking about the right motion?
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. That's
That's a good question by Alderman Deuter, and the appropriate account is in circle back number eight, immediately under that, which has all of the breakdown in the budget if it were to go.
Point of order, should we not be talking about the motion to table and only that?
Well, we should, but...
I guess my thought is, should the motion be withdrawn because it's not getting us where we want to go?
When we get three layers down, we know we're in trouble. If, if you want to withdraw the motion to table and the second, we can go back to the motion to talk about whether your motion is in an operating line, in which case the maker of that motion, which would be Alderman Bram, seconded by, I believe, Alderman Hill, would have to amend their motion.
No, not.
Jensen, but I follow, I believe that was correct, but I still have something to talk about the tabling.
So, point of order, in my motion, I said the account number that's on page CEB 32 in my motion. Mr. Mayor made a request, what CEB page number? So I originally said account number blah, blah, blah. And then Mr. Mayor asked what page number that is in the cab, and I said the page number in the cab. So if I reference the account number, that is essentially the operating budget, and therefore the motion should be valid.
So the account number you're using is the, is this the one at the top of the cab that we're talking?
It is, correct.
Okay, well, that, that, I agree with Alderman Bram, it's that account number. All right, so to be clear, Alderman Bram's motion is on page 32, but it refers to account number 1106061-570140, correct, Alderman Bram? All right. Back to the motion to table. Alderman Nardini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wouldn't be in favor of the motion to table if we aren't tying it to having staff, when we return it to discussion, if it weren't tied to staff finding the 540 or 514,000 from some other amount as proposed earlier by Alderman Toledo.
Well, I think the purpose of tabling it is so staff can get back to us with what the impact would be, amongst other things.
Purpose of tabling is just to table.
That's right.
I would be in favor of tabling the motion if, upon returning to it, staff had proposed an alternative $500,000.
I don't even think that that was, I think the, and anyone may correct me, I don't think it was to find an alternative 540,000. The question was, what would the impact be if we took the 540,000 out of the asphalt and put it into the concrete?
No, I believe it was, if I'm not mistaken, it was proposed to find, to reduce 500,000 from something else to go to the concrete.
Well, I thought it was specifically from the asphalt, is that...
No, I, or, then I misunderstood Alderman Toledo, but I thought she was proposing to defer to staff to find funds from somewhere for that concrete.
Alderman Brennan.
It was my bright idea to look at resurfacing. Alderman Toledo broadened it, which I support. So I'm interested in the impact of, so if we go from the resurfacing budget, what's the impact? If there's another lever that we can pull to do 540, I'm opening, open to hear that.
Well, staff will come back and tell us where the 540 can come from, and if it came out of asphalt, what the impact would be, or could it be from somewhere else? I don't know that we have to tie it to the motion table because they'll be back here next week, and we'll be asking the same question, so. On the motion to table, anyone else? All right, we're going to vote on the motion to table. If it passes, then we will pick it up at the next committee of the whole meeting. If it doesn't, we're back to the main motion. Clerk Tamer, on the motion to table.
Deuter?
Aye.
Marimus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Hart? Rivera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
No.
12 ayes, one nay, one absent.
12 ayes, one nay, one absent, the motion is tabled. So...
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. We're tired.
Second? Alderman Marimus, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For adjourn.